Good afternoon. I understand that we have a quorum. We will give you the count on the exact quorum a little bit later because there's still people checking in. I would ask everyone to move to their seats as quickly as possible. I hereby call to order the Town of Carlisle Special Town Meeting of November 2nd, 2025. Good afternoon, I am Wayne Davis, your town moderator. I welcome everyone here in the quarry auditorium, and I also welcome our citizens gathered in the cafeteria and in the Benfield Community Room. On behalf of everyone, including your fellow citizens who are not here, I thank you for showing up on time. And, on behalf of the Select Board, let me express very special thanks, as well as apologies, to any Patriots fans who showed up here today. When the Board last spring set the date for today's meeting, nobody expected the Pats to be going for their sixth straight. So I think we can just say, it wasn't your fault, guys. So just to all of you, your and everyone's commitment to civic duty is commendable and, dare I say, patriotic. I have had one special request that came in, and that is that any of you who are following the score on your phones, please do not blurt it out because there are some people recording and they just want to have the thrill of the game when they get home. Okay, with that, let me just do a quick audio check. First, I'll check in with Nancy West at Benfield. Can you hear us all right at Benfield?
We absolutely can.
Okay, great, thank you. And Vanessa Maroni, who is my assistant moderator in the cafeteria, everything fine there?
Yes, thanks, Wayne.
Okay, great, and we can hear you both. So, now for the really important announcement, the fire exits are to your left, those of you in the auditorium, to your left, down there, at the front and at the rear of the auditorium, in the cafeteria, the fire exits are also in the right and left corners. Benfield, you know where your door is. If we must adjourn the meeting on an emergency basis, we will reconvene at the same locations tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. I really hope we don't need to do that. So, let's get straight down to business. Let's begin by just having everyone on stage introduce themselves, and I will start with our town clerk behind me.
Hi, I'm Ashley Cody, the town clerk, thank you.
Scott Triola, Carlisle Select Board.
Bernie Arnold, Carlisle Select Board.
David Modell, Carlisle Select Board.
Travis Snell, Carlisle Select Board.
And I'm Christine Stevens, also on the Carlisle Select Board.
Thank you. I've inspected the return of service of the warrant and determined it has been properly served. I will assume the consent of the meeting to waive the reading of the warrant. Hearing no objection, the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. I have appointed Nancy Showett-West of 532 South Street and Vanessa Maroni of 142 Bedford Road to serve as assistant moderators at Benfield Farms and in the cafeteria, respectively, and I've sworn them to that position. I'm going to skip over a procedures review at this point, and we'll just highlight the main things to know during the meeting as and when they are needed. That said, I don't expect anyone here to be a parliamentary expert, and if there is any procedure that you don't understand, or there's something that you'd like to do but don't quite know the magic words or the right motion, there are no magic words, you can just ask to be recognized and we'll figure out what you want and we'll get things going. It truly is okay, you just rise to a point of order. Also, you may rise or shout out a point of order if you're unable to see or hear or something else is going on that's a difficulty preventing your participation. Now, we originally had three articles on the warrant as was published for today's meeting. No motion will be offered under Article III, so that leaves us with two. As I publicly announced some time ago, following consultation with the Select Board, I've determined to exercise my discretion as the moderator, and we will take, we will start by taking Motion 2 first. Motion 1 will come a little bit later. So, let's get started. You all have your motions books, I hope. And we turn to Article 2, which, way in the back, here we are. Starting on page 18, motion has been offered by Scott Triola on behalf of the Select Board, moves the appropriation of $1,400,000 for the purpose of paying cost of architectural designs, engineering services, owner's project management services, site testing, et cetera, as written in your motions handout. I now recognize Mr. Triola and the Fire Chief, Mr. Sorrows, to give a presentation and speak to the article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everyone, for attending Special Town Meeting. I'm Scott Triola, Chair of the Select Board, and I'm here with Fire Chief Brian Sorrows to present Article 2, Fire Station Renovation Design Costs. To begin, I want to take a step back and put this fire station project within the larger context of Carlisle's public safety facilities, police, fire, and DPW. All of these existing public safety facilities were opened in the 1980s, they do not meet today's health and safety standards, they are in disrepair, they do not meet the operational needs of their departments, nor do they meet the service requirements of our community. Investment in these facilities can no longer be deferred. The police renovation project has been approved by the town and is underway. Today, we are requesting funding to advance the fire station project to the design phase. Next year, we plan to seek design funding for the DPW building project. I'll present some high-level financial information on these projects at the end of this presentation, but for now, let's focus on the fire station. Chief.
So what you see is a picture of the current station, it was built in about 1985, it was a great improvement over what we had before, but they, when they built it, they knew it would need to be enlarged, they planned for more bays, they planned for another story for all the offices, meeting, and bunk space that they knew that they needed. In the interim, we find that code does not allow us to modify the building to add another story. So, one thing to understand, that since 1985, the housing and the housing stock has changed. Houses are much bigger, firefighter safety requirements have changed, and the department membership has changed. One example is about a quarter of the department is now female. The station that supports our on-call department of over 40 firefighters and EMTs is no longer sufficient for the department's needs.
Great, so, it's taken a lot of work over a long period of time to get to this critical point in the fire station project. Way back in 2017, many of you may remember the Independent Town Facilities Condition Study, that found that the fire department was undersized, not compliant with modern health and safety standards, lacked adequate equipment, storage, and so on and so on. All issues that persist today and have only worsened over the past eight years. Subsequent to this study, the Public Safety Task Force looked at various options, including building a new combined police and fire facility, as well as building a new fire station on a new site. Their recommendation, based on cost and feasibility, was to renovate and expand the fire station on the existing site, and that's the path we are, in fact, pursuing. So last year, the Select Board made the fire station a top priority and worked with the fire department and the project architect to both assess our fire station needs and review and refine several conceptual designs. This important work was made possible with the town's approval of design funding at the annual town meeting last May. This funding allowed us to arrive at the conceptual design we are now reviewing. Is that cut off, sorry. If the $1.4 million in design funding is approved for this next phase, we will return to town meeting next year for approval of the total remaining project budget. And again, the total project budget, I'll speak a little bit more about at the end of the presentation. The following key goals have defined, have been defined for the fire station project and serve as the foundation of the conceptual design. They include, meet the current and anticipated health and safety standards for our firefighters and EMT, to provide living and working space necessary to attract and retain on-call firefighters, accommodate gender equity within the facility, maximize the existing space and only add cost-effective space as needed, and maintain a high level of sustainability throughout the project. Shown here is a concept drawing of the station exterior and initial site test fit. These are not final, but provide an idea of where things are headed. The existing station will be retained, you can see it on the left with the three existing apparatus bays, and a new addition will be added to the rear of the station on the existing site. Chief Sorrows will now review the conceptual design floor plan with a focus on the first two goals of firefighter health and safety and supporting our on-call model.
So what you can see here, in the first picture, you can see that we have turnout gear in the bays. It's not appropriate from a contamination standpoint, but also leaves little room in the station to be able to move around the apparatus. We have no separation between areas that can be contaminated and areas that should be kept free from contamination. Third picture, you see the state-of-the-art compressor and filling station for our air bottles, who were able to obtain through a federal grant. We had nowhere to put them, but shoehorned them under the stairs in the bays. Now we see pictures, the first one is of a room that was built as a hose room, but is now the day room, the kitchen, the report-writing workspace, and the equipment repair room. Second picture shows the office for the EMS coordinator located in the entryway to the station. Third picture is our training room, which also is the office for the fire prevention officer and the admin. The classroom can't fit the full membership and isn't up to state standards to allow us to have an EMT class in the station. The current on-call model is not sustainable in the existing station. The idea of a modern station is to separate the areas that can be contaminated from those that should remain clean. You see above, the red areas, red zones, can be the most contaminated, with the yellow zones being transitioned and the green zones remaining clean from contamination. This is true for surfaces, but also especially true for the air we breathe. The smoke and fire debris contains contaminants that increase the risks of certain cancers in firefighters. Property contamination transition zones are critical to the health and safety of our firefighters. So, you see the apparatus bays that we're proposing to support the current fleet and some future advances for EMTs. The, well, we have firematic support areas that we don't have now, EMS supply and drug storage, which are now in portable storage areas, turnout gear and transition zones as well. So, and then, now, you see the second floor will contain a combination of training room and kitchen and day room with movable partition, has much-needed training space for the entire force and provide the community with a space we can hold classes and training for things like CPR, stop the bleed, and more. Bunk rooms provide a place for firefighters to remain on duty overnight and during emergencies. These rooms can also be used as private offices, so the remote workers can locate at the station and be on-call. This is something we sorely needed. This is currently not possible in today's station. The tents really are not a viable option for remote workers. Fitness rooms are standard in modern fire stations. In fact, they'll be required by OSHA in the future, and provide significant health benefits by allowing firefighters and EMTs to exercise after responding to an emergency. It also allows firefighters a place to exercise in the station and remain on-call. One thing to understand is, our on-call model actually provides the dynamic staffing that really improves what we can offer for our town. It takes a lot of firefighters to respond to a fire in Carlisle. We have to transport water to the scene and be able to build an above-ground hydrant system to fight the fire. As I've said previously, what makes us different than other towns that do real water supply is that our surrounding communities, they have surrounding communities with the same capabilities. In our case, we're surrounded by towns that can't really help us with the water supply part of things. So, we need 12 to 20 people to fight a fire, we've been getting them and it's great, but it's increasingly difficult to recruit and retrain firefighters who can respond to a call, need to be able to get to the station in about four minutes, otherwise, they are not so useful to us. So, using career firefighters to supply all of this is really not financially feasible. And I will also make the note that if we ever did in the future need to hire a career staff, what we're proposing is exactly what you would need for them. You'd need bunk rooms, day rooms, support space, et cetera, that you see in this design.
Ryan, could you just? All right. So, in addition to allowing the current level of fire response, the on-call model also provides Carlisle with a significant financial benefit when it comes to staffing costs. This year, we will spend approximately $300,000 total for our on-call force of over 40 firefighters. If we are unable to sustain this model, this on-call model, the cost for a minimal, full-time professional firefighter force increases to $2 million, or more per year than in what's called a fully-career department. That would be an increase of at least $1.7 million in staffing costs to our annual operating budget, and that staffing cost increase alone exceeds the annual cost of building a new station, as you'll see momentarily. This would also be in perpetuity, there would be no going back to an on-call model. Doing simple math, over the course of 30 years, this added expense would exceed $50 million. For this extra expense, we would also receive a much lower level of response, given the reduction in available firefighters. Finally, as the chief mentioned, regardless of the staffing model, the fire station will still need renovation and expansion to meet modern standards. The bottom line is that Carlisle must take every action to preserve our on-call force, and this fire station project is a critical and smart investment in maintaining our strong department culture and operations. So let's talk about the project costs. The initial total project cost estimate, based on the conceptual design we're looking at today, is $16.75 million. And again, to be clear, today's ask is for $1.4 million for the Phase 2 costs shown here. In Phase 2, the complete schematic design and constructing documents will be created and finalized, required permitting will be secured and completed, and the project will be put out to bid. This bidding process will finalize the project cost, and we will return to town meeting next year to request the remaining project funding. While we are currently requesting $1.4 million for Phase 2, I do want to provide you with a look at the projected financial impact of the fire station project, based on this total cost estimate of $16.75 million. And again, note that this is just a preliminary look, and more exact numbers will be presented after completion of the next phase. This graph shows the total debt payment, based on a 30-year timeframe and a 4.5% interest rate assumption. If this project proceeds without significant delay, the first substantial debt payments would begin in fiscal year '29, with a first estimated debt payment totaling approximately $1.3 million. We are currently in fiscal year '26, and fiscal year '27 begins next June. This is a significant capital investment, but well worth it, as this investment will allow us to sustain our on-call department operations and cost structure. This graph shows the same information converted to annual estimated cost per average Carlisle home. This initial $1.3 million annual debt payment in fiscal '29 converts to a cost share of approximately $650 per average home. Now, as I mentioned at the outset, all three of our public safety facilities require capital investment. As we look to move forward to the next phase of the fire station project, it is important for you to understand how this request fits into this larger context, and let you know that we are taking the necessary steps to plan for these investments, ensure the continued financial health of the town, and manage the burden placed on individual taxpayers. Shown here is the current police station debt payment over the next 30 years. This project has been approved and is underway. Shown here on top of that is the projected fire station payments we just reviewed. Again, this funding would be requested at a town meeting next year. And finally shown here is the addition of a future DPW project, which will be considered next year. The fire station and DPW numbers are, again, preliminary estimates, and more detailed and refined costs will be presented at future town meetings for approval. These projects together represent a significant but required investment in the town's public safety facilities over the next 30 years. The Select Board, working in conjunction with the Finance Committee and Town Finance Department, is actively planning for this combined capital expense in both the short term and in the long term. There will be much more to come at future town meetings with regard to these public safety projects. Back to the motion at hand that we are considering today. Again, we are requesting $1.4 million to move the fire station project to the next phase, which is design. This is an excluded debt question, so it requires a 2/3 vote today at Special Town Meeting, followed by a majority vote at a town election to be held on Thursday, November 13th. On behalf of the Select Board, I ask for your support in moving this important project forward, and I'll turn it over to the chief for some final words.
So, your support of this article greatly helps us in our ability to remain an on-call department, but we also still rely on the dedication of our existing and new members. Many of you may think that you're too busy to serve, but as an example, when I started, I had three-year-old twins and worked at a tech startup. I'm not unique. Many who join expressed that their only regret is that they didn't start sooner. If you have an interest, talk to a current member or reach out to me. In a few years, you should be able to share the benefits of an expanded station.
Sorry, I needed to get your stunning picture back up here, so everyone could appreciate our department. Thank you very much. And of course, that applause was just for the volunteers, it was not for your presentation asking for money. Just to make that clear, because we don't do applause in town meetings, except for some very special things. Our volunteers are very special. Okay. With that, could we get up the slide with the summary of the recommendations? And Matt, we've lost the slides again. We need the slide with the recommendations from the boards and committees.
I don't have that one.
Oh, you don't have that one? Oh, Aubrey has that, huh?
I know what they are.
Oh, you know what they are? Okay, tell you what, Scott, why don't you, if you could report what the, just list off the, if you have all the votes, I don't know if you have them.
I don't have the, I won't offer the specific vote totals, because in some cases, there might have been an absent member.
Okay, all right, well then, let me, then we'll just have to do it the old-fashioned way. Could we have, and please, any boards and committees, please move to the microphones right away. Let's start with the Select Board's vote.
You want to do it, Bernie? Hi, the Select Board voted unanimously to support Article 3, Article 2.
Thank you. FinCom? Yes, please. Mic 5? Okay.
Thanks, David. There we go. Finance Committee unanimously supports this project.
Okay, so then, let's, we'll go around in numerical order, starting with mic 1.
Planning Board voted unanimously to support.
Thank you. Mic 2.
The Environmental Sustainability Committee voted unanimously to support funding the next design phase of the fire station renovation expansion. From the earliest phase of this project, the town, specifically the Select Board, Fire Chief, Town Administrator, and others, has incorporated environmental sustainability into the overall process. The preliminary conceptual design considers rooftop solar PV panels, electrified HVAC, and upgraded systems to prevent environmental contamination. Furthermore, a well-equipped on-call fire department with appropriate facilities for firefighters and equipment significantly reduces the fire threat to life and property, and at the same time, reduces the risk to loss of loss in the natural environment. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we're back to microphone 5, Mr. Mariano?
The Board of Health, in the name of public health and safety, voted unanimously to support this article.
Okay, and then, back to microphone 2.
The Municipal Facilities Committee voted unanimously to support this warrant article.
Okay, thank you. And did we have votes from any other town boards or committees? And then, any, we already heard the opinion from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, yes?
Wayne? Sorry, calling here from the cafeteria. We have a representative here in the caf.
Oh, okay, please, please identify yourself and let's go.
Hi, Toni McBride from the Carlisle Council on Aging and Human Services, and the COAHS votes to support this warrant article, all in favor with one abstaining.
Thank you very much. And so now, I was just going to ask if, first, FinCom, and then if any of the other boards or committees wanted to elaborate on their votes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the Finance Committee, as I said, unanimously supports this. The main driver in our decision is the need to maintain on-call. So, as Mr. Triola illustrated, the cost to go to partial or a full staffing model would be significantly more than the cost would be to invest in this new fire station, and with that likely, we would still have to build some sort of an addition or renovations to the project itself. So, from a financial standpoint, maintaining on-call to us is priority 1. I'd also like to add that we've been working closely with Ryan and the rest of the financial team. Some of the numbers that you saw from Mr. Triola up there, showing the debt calculations over the next 20-plus years, we've been working with the financial team on that. So, we feel that there's analysis to be done, but we feel that these projects all certainly have merit in the term of public safety. So there are areas, OPEB, retirement funds, other obligations that will be falling off in the future, that the Finance Committee thinks is imperative towards, to put those dollars and allocate them towards projects like this.
Thank you very much. The Select Board need to elaborate, or are we fine? Okay. All right, then, with that, I believe we are ready to, what I'd like to do is first take a few moments just to see if there are any questions, before we actually move to comment and debate. So, a couple of things to keep in mind. First, I would ask, just so we can move as quickly as possible, that people do move to the microphones if you wish to speak. If anyone is unable to get up and move to the microphone, we do have a roving mic, you can just ask to be recognized, but otherwise, we'll ask that people move to the microphones. When you do get to the microphone, get yourself about a hands' width away from the mic, feel free to adjust it up or down as you need to. Those of you in the cafeteria, if you wish to speak, just move to that microphone, and you can line up to the side of that. And at Benfield, just ask Nancy, and she'll message me, and we will recognize you as well. So, and the time limit on questions, when you stand up, you should identify, first identify your name and your street address, so that we have it for the record. You'll have one minute to ask your question, questions get addressed through me, and I get to decide whether we should have them answered or not. If it's a genuine question, you'll get it answered, if you're really just advocating for something masquerading as a question, then I may not have that answered, okay? So, any questions? And the questions, by the way, can go not only to our presenters, but if you have questions for any of the town boards or committees or officials, feel free to offer those as well. Okay? Any questions? I'm not seeing anyone here in the auditorium. Do we have anyone at the, in Benfield? Doesn't look like we do. Okay, we have one question, perhaps? Please, at microphone 5.
I was supposed to know from Curve Street. I'd like to know how you come up to the numbers $16 million on the total project when we're spending 1.4 to evaluate.
Okay, please answer that.
Let me just pull up, so the 16.75 million dollar cost estimate, Ryan, could you just come up and put this back in? That was provided by the project architect, subsequent to agreeing on a conceptual design. They then take that conceptual design and bring it to a cost estimator who, working on-
on, again, the conceptual design doesn't have all the details and necessary specifications to fully cost out a project, but they can give you a reasonable estimate of what they think that's going to be. In this case, based on the conceptual design, Tecton Architects had their cost estimator come up with the, with the total project estimate, and, sorry, that's not the slide I'm looking for. There's a hardened cost slide. And that includes a combination of the, if you go to the appendix, it's probably not in here. That's fine. In any event, so they take a look at the conceptual design. They determine based on that, based on all the information that they have, what the hard costs are for construction, based on the site investigation work that was done. Yeah, that's it. They'll evaluate how much site work they think is needed. And again, this is all preliminary, but that's where it comes from. And in this case, this was the information that was presented. They anticipate hard costs of 13.6 million, a construction contingency of 700,000, soft costs, which include legal permitting, all the various additional soft costs that go into a project. And the 1.4 that we'd be approving would be part of the total. But again, part of the output of the next phase would be a specific project total that would be bid. And so what we would bring to town meeting next year would be the final project cost.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions? Okay, we can move to debate.
Wait, wait. Cafeteria.
Yes. I'm sorry, we got one in Benfield, I mean cafeteria?
Hi. Gabrielle Doctorman, 345 Russell Street. I, I'm open to this next phase, but the sticker price of the end product is just ridiculous in my, it was shocking to me, including the 1.7 or 8 million of contractor profit made off of this. And I just wonder if, how much consideration or how much control we have, or now, if we vote yes, but we really don't like the end price, and would like to see that way down.
Okay, that was a little bit more advocacy than I'd like to hear in a question, and I'm just pointing that out because I'm going to have zero tolerance for that when we get to the next article. But since, but, no, I, I am quite serious about that, and, and actually, I thank Ms. Doctorman for this. It's fine in this, in this context, and you did end with a genuine and important question. But just, just so that people are forewarned, when I ask for questions later on the MBTA, they better just hit it straight. What is your question? No preliminaries. Okay? Please address the question.
So a couple of points to make on that. One is that the, the design will be based on the conceptual design that we looked at today. So the next step, the next phase, they'd be working off of that conceptual design and doing the construction documents and final specifications around that concept. So at the end of that, if you decide, well, we don't like this station, you don't get the 1.4 million dollars back. But what you will get, and part of the reason we're doing it this way, is it allows us to take the project out to bid, where we'll actually get construction bids from the people who are stepping forward to do the work that would specify the cost, the actual cost that we would contract with the bidder to provide. So, again, that, this is a cost estimate. What that cost is going to be, higher or lower, we don't know. I think, to your, to the question about the sticker shock, I think we've all, at different phases, had sticker shock in terms of municipal construction. This roughly translates to $1,000 per square foot, which is what we're seeing across the Commonwealth, across projects, and things are not getting cheaper. Costs continue to escalate, and part of the reason that we're here today is so that we can keep moving this project forward, because it's only going to get more expensive. So I guess the answer to the question is, we'll know the final cost once we get the bid. Those bids will be based on the design that's coming out of this conceptual design.
Mr. Moderator, may I add one thing?
Sure.
Wayne?
Yes.
May I add one thing on behalf of the Select Board? So this is Travis Snell. I did want to add to Mr. Triola's comments that we have studied this extensively. I think the Select Board in particular had concerns about this project upfront, based on the cost, and trying to understand how we can do this most efficiently and best for Carlisle. To study that, we spent the past year with a special committee, of which two Select Board members were on it, a FinCom member, a member from the Municipal Facilities Committee, a member from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and really honed in on what is essential and what gets us to where we want to go without gold-plating this or spending too much money. So we studied what apparatus is necessary, what bays would be required for that apparatus, and what is the plan going forward. And so I think that the plan that we've developed, at least in this schematic phase, is the most efficient, reasonable plan to get Carlisle where it needs to be.
Okay, and at microphone five. Is this a question, or are you ready to go into debate?
It's a question.
Okay, please proceed.
But I will say, it's a question, but...
But identify yourself, please.
Doug Stevenson, 271 Cross Street. It's a question, but it comes with full support of the project. There was a graph that was put up that showed, I think, long-term debt peaking in 2030 at something over $2 million. I'm just curious, what is the tax impact on the average taxpayer in Carlisle? And the follow-up to that is, do we have other long-term debt that we're retiring at the same time that will offset that increase in the tax burden for individual taxpayers?
Okay, great question. Do we want Select Board or FinCom to address that one?
I can speak to it initially, and if FinCom wants to chime in. So this wasn't in the presentation, it was the, it was the similar version of the slide that converted the estimated debt payments to the average tax impact for an average Carlisle home. And so you can see in the 2030, that would, the estimated, including police, fire, and DPW, would be $1,300 to the average Carlisle family. How, how your overall tax bill is going to change, this will be an input to that, but there's much work to be done in terms of, we do have some debt coming off the books from previous projects. And again, as we're looking at our operating budget and our capital plans going forward, my point about planning for this is looking at all those expenses, looking at the timing of the nature of those expenses, knowing this is coming, there are different levers we'll look to pull to minimize the tax impact on the individual taxpayer. But that work has yet to happen. It'll, it'll start this year with the budget planning process, which we're just kicking off.
I'll just say, I have very little to add. Scott just really hit the nail on the head. And the Finance Committee has, for years, prioritized public safety, feeling that that's an area that certainly we need to have, as opposed to a nice-to-have. So looking at these numbers, we've already started the preliminary part of our budget process this year for both capital and operating, and we are certainly factoring in the potential for this to be approved, and as well as the DPW, in terms of, as Scott said, capital and additional requests that may be under operating.
Okay, so not seeing anyone else at the microphones with questions, we can move to floor debate. So you can have up to two minutes, though, as always, the more succinct you are, the more everyone else in the room appreciates it. So if you wish to speak, please approach one of the microphones. It looks like microphone five, start there.
Yes. Warren Lyman, 516 Cross Street. I'd like to infuse a slightly different focus on this debate, and that is that what we're voting for and paying a lot of money for, which I have to, I'll start off by saying I fully support, is life-saving. All you have to do is look at the annual report, and I think it was Chief Soro's statement, and the last one said, "Medical response has become a central focus of the department's service to the citizens of Carlisle, and it accounts for the vast majority of their calls." And I was one of them. In my wife and I's 52 years in town, I think we've had to call on the fire department at least three times for help, once for a chimney fire, once for, I think, a malfunctioning carbon monoxide detector, and once in the middle of the night in 2013, when I was a medical mess. They were able to evaluate me on-site, treat me on-site, which they don't have to do for all patients, and took me to the hospital. And that was in 2013, and I think that incident was so serious that I attribute them, to a large extent, for giving me another 12 years of my life. If you look at the statistics, I think the last year was about 344 EMT calls, most of them requiring transport, and maybe about a fifth of them, including treatment on-site. With all of the work that those EMTs do, I'm not recommending it, but it would be appropriate if they were considered, not just the fire department, but the fire department and life-saving department. So...
You have two minutes, please wrap up.
Okay. I'll just finish up. I think if you look at those statistics, that's about six people a week who require EMS transport. Of those, I would bet, guess that at least one of them ends up being a life-saving event. So call it, you know, 50 a year, and that's what we're saving, and that's why I'm going to vote for this.
Thank you. And I just forgot to mention before that I brought my little bell. And so, so that I, I'm, my apologies, Mr. Lyman, I should have said that before, but I'm going to use this to give you a 15-second warning that it's time to wrap up. So that'll be at a minute 45. Mr. Ballantyne, please identify yourself.
John Ballantyne, 268 Fifth Street, member of the Master Planning Committee and also the Public Safety Committee. And so just for those of you who have not read the 450-page master plan, there are two appendices, one of which talks about the facilities' needs of the town. This is back in 2021, and we thought at that point we needed for police and fire up to $15 million for facilities. That would include some worker housing. So this is not a surprise. Total facilities' needs, which included DPW at that point, we thought was 30 million. So again, these are not figures that are coming out of blue, in blue air, so we've known about them. Also, in Appendix L, we went through a very detailed financial model on how to service this debt, and how the debt service is, impacts individuals in Carlisle. One of the things that's important is the paying off of debt, also town growth. New housing helps defer these costs, and also, by the way, our relative income. Luckily, our relative income is still rising, and so the Select Board and FinCom are very careful in looking at average tax payments and incidents to our income. So once we go over 20 million in debt, we do start seeing that increase. We had that with schools, and this is what everybody is looking for going forward. So I thank, first of all, all our public safety people for helping all of us, like Warren said, and for all the careful planning that we go through.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Do we have anyone in the cafeteria?
No.
Okay, great. Anyone from Benfield? I have not seen a message from you, Nancy, so I think we're good. Okay, and no one here? All right. Well, that means we're almost ready to vote, but to do that, I said we would just wait and do the usual electronic voting, testing, instruction, and so forth. So let's just take a moment for that, and while Ryan's getting the slides up, let me just check with the town clerk, see what our quorum counts.
Oh. Not that one.
I'll just fire myself.
Nancy, how many people do you have at Benfield?
I know. That's wild.
We have 10.
We have 10, okay.
Plus the two.
Okay, so our quorum today, at this moment, is 470. So it's not the 1,000 people we were worried about a few months ago, but it is higher than anything I can recall in the last 20 years, so I guess it's historic in some sense. All right, so voting electronic, and can we just get, maybe get the slide view, slideshow view up? Okay, so everyone's got their clickers, and we had to get some extra clickers, so there, there may be two versions. There are the ones with the green, the Carlisle ones, and then there are some borrowed ones. It's very simple. When we vote, you're just going to choose yes is button one, no is button two. Later on, there'll be some differences in what those mean between, but we're only going to use those two buttons. Those of you who have a different clicker that has three, four, and five, just ignore those, they don't work. So it's just like your TV remote control. When you vote, you're gonna, you're gonna see an okay come up, and that will let you know that your vote has been registered. No abstentions. If you don't want to vote, you just don't vote. That's it. Okay? Now, are we, I think we are ready to move to our test vote. If we could just move this one forward. And here we go. I decided not to ask you to predict how far the Patriots were going to get in the playoffs this, this year. So, okay, so let's open the voting. At Benfield, you guys can chat for the next 30 seconds if you want. Okay, the voting's open? No, Ryan, don't, we've switched. Okay, so a couple more people, and feel free to switch your votes around if you want. Okay. And then, so those are showing votes are, okay. So let's close the voting now. And I... Okay, but, but can people... Yeah, but I'm not seeing any, there's no color. Okay, so it's, unfortunately, it's a little bit hard, yes, we have a problem? Someone's clicker didn't work?
I'm working on it.
Okay, all right. So yeah, any, I'm sorry, I forgot to say, if anyone's clicker doesn't get an okay, you can hold up your hand, and we'll have our runners get you some new clickers. It's a little bit hard to see with our old projector here, but you can maybe tell, so like if we look at 230, can you stop scrolling for a second? So if you look at 238, it's a little bit lighter. I, actually, I know that 238 doesn't work, so that one's actually not in the mix. But if, if you look on the back of your keypad, you'll see the number of yours, and it will, if you voted, it will be darker, slight... It's hard to see on this projector, but for example, 197, 238, 269, those clearly did not vote. We didn't distribute all the clickers, so that's fine, but just if you wanted to see whether yours, yours was captured or not, you can see that. Hey, could we scroll through a little bit more, Peter? Just so people can see. Okay. All right. Everyone happy with this? We can see, any questions that anyone has? And everyone's clickers, you got an okay? If not... We all set? No one's waiting? Okay. So with that, we are going to go back, and we are going to vote on Article 2, the motion that's made. So this is a $1.4 million appropriation for the fire station design. This is subject to the debt override vote on November 13th, and a two-thirds majority is required. And with that, voting is now open. Press your one button if yes, and your two button if no.
Yes means you want to spend money.
It doesn't mean you want to spend money, you authorize the spending.
Everyone's clicker's working?
No, 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 we don't. Okay, we'll take a few more seconds. So five, four, three, two, one, and we'll close the voting with that. And let me ask Nancy to, and our other folks who are participating, to be sure to put your votes in the Zoom chat for me. Nancy, I'm not seeing your vote yet from Benfield.
Oh, okay, I did put it in. I don't know why you're not seeing it. Anyway, it's 10 in favor, zero opposed.
So with that, the vote is 442 in favor, 28 opposed. Motion carries by more than two-thirds, and I so declare. We are now back to Article 1. I'll wait till everyone is settled down here. Article 1 concerns a proposed amendment to the Carlisle zoning bylaws concerning the MBTA community zoning bylaws specifically. And this has been divided into two motions. So the first motion will be concerning which of two possible sites should be where this new zoning overlay district will be located. Once the meeting has decided which of the two sites should have that overlay district, there will then be a second motion as to whether to adopt the zoning bylaw as applied to that district, yes or no. So, Motion 1 is offered by Sarah Smith on behalf of the Planning Board. Move that the town vote to amend the Town of Carlisle zoning bylaws for the purpose of complying with the MBTA Communities... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong motion. Actually, no, let me start over. Move that the town vote to amend the Town of Carlisle zoning bylaws for the purpose of complying with the MBTA Communities Act, General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, and 760 Code of Massachusetts Regulations, Section 72, by taking action in two parts as follows. Motion 1, and I'm going to hold Motion 2 until later. Motion 1, move that the town votes to select a single site for the location of a new MBTA Communities multi-family overlay district, multi-family, one-site MFOS, selecting either A, 187 East Street, parcel 22580, land area of approximately 6.24 acres, commonly referred to as St. Irene's Parish, or B, 1-15, 171921 and 23 K's Walk, parcel 104X, land area of approximately 9.48 acres, commonly referred to as Woodward Village. Okay, so that is the motion. Excuse me. The way we're going to handle this is first, we're going to have a presentation from the Planning Board. This will actually, content-wise, cover all the subject matter for both Motion 1 and Motion 2. In other words, the choice as between the two sites, as well as the reasons why, in the Planning Board's view, the zoning bylaw as a whole should be so amended. Even though the presentation will cover both, the floor debate and the voting on the two motions will be separate. Okay? I hope that's clear, and if not, I'm sure it'll become clear as we move along. So at this point, I'd like to recognize our Planning Board Administrator, Julie Mercier, to please begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm glad to see that everybody stayed. I'm Julie Mercier, town planner, and I'm going to kick off the presentation of Article 1 for the Planning Board. Can you show it on screen, please? Somebody? All right, great, thank you. Okay, so just a quick overview of the presentation today. I'm going to start with the Planning Board's report and recommendation to town meeting, and then we'll get into some basics of the MBTA Communities Act, which at this point I hope a lot of you are already familiar with, and penalties of noncompliance. And then we'll get into the local process, which led us to the proposal that is being put forward tonight. All right, so the Planning Board report on Article 1. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Planning Board held a public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendment under Article 1. The hearing opened September 29th, 2025, continued October 6th, 2025, and closed October 20th, 2025. At their meeting of October 20th, 2025, the Planning Board voted 7-0-0 to recommend Article 1 to town meeting with the following sites as an either-or choice. Site 1A, which will match your clickers, so that's why they're 1A and 2B. So Site 1A is 187 East Street, St. Irene's Parish. Site 2B, K's Walk, Woodward Village. So MBTA Communities Act basics. What is the MBTA Communities Act? It's a state law. It was signed by the legislature under the Baker administration in 2021, I believe. It requires 177 cities and towns, which includes Carlisle, to adopt zoning that allows for a certain amount of multifamily housing by right in at least one district. What does Carlisle have to do? So Carlisle needs to create zoning that allows for the possibility of 95 units of multifamily housing and complies with the law and regulations in all respects. The zoning must allow for housing to be developed at a density of 15 units per acre that is suitable for families with children. The zoning cannot require the housing to be age-restricted, but a developer could build it that way. Our deadline for compliance is December 31st, 2025. It's important to note that while the zoning creates the possibility for development, many factors may constrain what might actually be built, such as wetlands, soils, availability of water, financial constraints, and a host of other considerations. What does multifamily housing mean? So in this law, multifamily housing means a building with three or more units, dwelling units, or two or more buildings on one lot, each with two or more units. The zoning does not have to be for high-rises or large apartment complexes. It could be duplexes, townhouses, or smaller-scale buildings, and that's important to note as we get into the presentation. So can we protect Carlisle's rural character? So yes, we can, by planning with care. There are many things about this zoning that we control. We control the location, we control the building scale. We can do this via a site plan review process with the Planning Board, which requires a public hearing, a legal ad that gets printed in the mosquito, and notification to a butters. And the zoning can include certain environmental protections, like requirements for open space and limits on the amount of land that can be covered by buildings. Title 5 always applies, and greater than 90 bedrooms, a project with more than 90 bedrooms would require a DEP-regulated public well and waste treatment facility. So now I'm going to turn this presentation over to Town Council for a moment. Thank you.
My name's Tom Harrington. I'm Town Council, and I'm with the law firm Harrington &amp; Heap, so I've been asked to address the next two slides. So this is the, what, you know, what this law is not. This law is not a mandate to build housing. It is a mandate to zone land in Carlisle that will allow for multifamily housing. It doesn't mean that the owner of that land must build land there. It doesn't mean we would be out of, must build housing there. It does not mean that we would be out of compliance if no project is ever built, or if a project is never built. So all it is, is a zoning amendment. It's restricted to, it's not restricted to affordable housing. Whatever use that property can be put to now, it can still be put to after we adopt the zoning. It's not a taking, it's just zoning. We're just allowing for it, but we're not requiring it. I'm going to ask to go to the next slide? Which one? Just a click. Okay. Penalties for noncompliance. So this is the litigation option, right? So as Town Council, I'm often asked to analyze a town situation and give litigation advice. The litigation advice usually comes down to, we've got a really good chance of winning this case, this case is a coin toss, I can't call it 50-50, or we don't have a chance, or we don't have much of a chance, but we can't really tell. In this instance, we have practically no chance of winning, okay? The law is clear. Well, let me say it differently. The law is a mandate, we must do this. This statute has been challenged in court and by the Town of Milton, and they received a resounding no, okay? So if we don't adopt it, we're going to find ourselves most likely in a lawsuit with the state, and I am telling you as Town Council, we will most likely lose that. And what that loss means, I don't know, but it could mean invalidating all or part of our zoning that we have in place now until we adopt the mandated zoning. We could have court orders issued to us for timeframes for adopting that zoning. We could be required to pay attorney's fees. We will certainly be required to vote again, and honestly, my advice to the town, if we don't leave this meeting with an affirmative vote on the zoning, my advice will be we need to schedule another town meeting before the end of the year to try to come into compliance. Noncompliance is not a good option. Finally, the court may appoint a special master, which means they kind of push our Planning Board out of the way. Someone comes in, serves as a special master, tells us what our zoning will be, tells us to put it on a warrant, and tells us to hold the town meeting so the town can vote on it. I don't find any of those options appealing. So I'm hoping that we're going to leave here with an affirmative vote. If we don't, I've told you, I'm going to advise the town that we need to hold another meeting before the end of the year.
Sarah Cassidy Smith, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm going to walk through the local process that we've been through over the past couple of years to get where we are today. In 2024, the Planning Board appointed a subcommittee, which spent almost a year considering approaches and sites, and issued a report to the Planning Board in late 2024. In early 2025, the Planning Board took the lead on the MBTA planning work. The Planning Board developed three zoning approaches, which we called scattered sites, cluster development, and a one-site approach. We created site selection scorecards and looked at over 110 sites across six different criteria. Sites were rated with assistance from relevant boards and committees. A little bit more detail on those scorecards in a few minutes. We also coordinated with a compliance consultant, a hydrology consultant, and a water and wastewater subject matter expert. FinCom prepared a fiscal impact analysis, which you will see at the end of the Planning Board's presentation. We received input and guidance from the state, the Attorney General's Office, and Town Council. We attended many Carlisle events, such as the Route to Sustainability Day, Old Home Day, a farmer's market, and more. We held over 20 public meetings, two open houses, and conducted a town-wide survey. More recently, we held three public hearings and made presentations to other boards and committees throughout September and October to gain input and support. So I just said, over the past 10 months, the Planning Board considered three strategies for compliance in response to feedback from residents and in alignment with the goals of the recent master plan. Two of those approaches, which we called scattered sites and cluster development, focused on geographically dispersed units throughout town, and the third was the more focused one-site approach. In response to pre-adoption feedback from the HLC and discussions with the Attorney General's Office, two approaches have been eliminated, and the single-site approach remains for compliance. Of the 16 sites we evaluated for the single-site approach, two sites remain. The site option that the board evaluated and will propose today were selected based on the assumption that some amount of development, up to and including full build-out, can and will happen at some point in the future. Market demand and financial feasibility are factors in a property owner's decision to develop or not. Other factors may take precedence over economic considerations, such as mission and preference. So once again, your site options are summarized on this slide. Option 1A, St. Irene's, as at 187 East Street. Option 2B, called Woodward Village, is located at K's Walk off of 225. And 1A and 2B correspond to the letters on your clickers, which you will use to vote later. later. So back to the scorecards. The board evaluated potential sites for the single-site approach, developing site scorecards to rank the appropriateness of each site across six criteria, weighted by importance, and containing a total of thirty parameters. The board developed six criteria and received input from other boards and committees. So if you look at the slide behind me, we sought input from ESC and ConsCom to rate sites for ecological sensitivity. We had input from our consulting engineer to give us feedback on sites for septic and water supply suitability. The Planning Board rated various sites for prioritized master plan goals and a butter impact, excuse me. We consulted mass DOT data and input from the Safety Committee to assess traffic capacity and mitigation. And we had input from Historical Commission on structure suitability. These different criteria were weighted differently, so you can see in the bottom section, the center of the slide, septic and water supply suitability had the highest weight, ecological sensitivity, traffic capacity, and a butter impact had the second-highest weight, and prioritized master plan goals and structure suitability had a lower weight. The weighted score totals are shown at the bottom of your screen. These two sites ranked in the top three of all sites considered for the one-site approach. The map shown on the screen locates the two sites proposed for consideration within the context of Carlisle. Saint Irene's is within a half-mile walk of town center along East Street. Woodward Village is on Kay's Walk, accessed from two twenty-five or Bedford Road, about a mile and a half from town center, and provides easy access to Bedford and Concord along a major roadway. Our survey results showed a forty-two percent preference for a zoning overlay district on developed land. These two sites ranked second and third among developed sites under consideration, although these sites were on the survey at that time for a smaller cluster development approach. And at this point, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Vice Chair Addie Grady, who will look at these two sites in greater detail.
Thank you, Sarah. Addie Grady, Adelaide Grady, Seventy-five Indian Hill, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. All right, so I'm going to try to both speak into the microphone and use the laser pointer, so bear with me. The Saint Irene's Parish site at one eighty-seven East Street is shown on this parcel map overlaid on an aerial image. East Street is shown here. The church building is here. You can see the parking area here. Carlisle's Kids' House is across the street. And Meadowbrook Road is behind to the west here. This site is walkable to town center via the town path and located along a major route through town. It currently houses large structures and a parking area on approximately two-point-three acres of cleared land. A large septic system and public drinking water supply wells currently exist on site. There are approximately two acres of wetlands, as indicated by the light-green blob overlaid, which I will point to, but I'm sure you can see it. This is not an easy laser pointer, Wayne. There's our wetlands. A compliant MBTA community zoning overlay on the Saint Irene's site would create the possibility...
This is the cafeteria. I'm sorry to interrupt the presentation. We've had a request from somebody in the cafeteria. Is it possible to use the mouse to highlight this, because we can't see the laser of what...
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so here's the wetlands, here's East Street, Carlisle Kids' House, Meadowbrook Road, church, historic house, and here is the parking area. Can you all see that? Can I avoid this? Awesome, thank you. So a compliant MBTA community zoning overlay would allow for the possibility that the current or a future owner could develop up to one hundred multifamily homes on the portions of the site that are developable, i.e. not wetlands. It's a hundred, not ninety-five, simply because of the area of the site and the fact that we can't create zoning for fractional numbers of units per acre, so it's sixteen units per acre on six-point-two-four acres. However, state and local environmental regulations, as well as financial and technical limitations, institutional limitations, may constrain the feasible build-out of the property. In an effort to assess the development constraints, as well as water and wastewater requirements for development, our consulting engineer prepared a conceptual site plan based on the proposed zoning bylaw, which is what you're seeing here on the screen. You can see the same wetland boundary, though it's not quite as clear, but here is the wetland boundary, which leaves approximately four acres of developable area within the site. And of course, many actual proposal, any actual proposal for development would need to go through an actual wetland delineation through Conservation Commission and Mass E.P. This study assumes that existing structures would need to be replaced in order to create a substantial number of new units. The hatched red V shape here is showing approximately twenty-eight units, and this larger red unhatched, two rectangles arranged perpendicular to each other, shows approximately sixty units. The purple line shows the area required for parking, and the blue lines indicate the area required for septic fields. As you can see, a proposed well, public drinking water supply well, would need to be placed within the wetlands in order to enable this build-out. With onsite septic and well, Title V allows just four to six bedrooms per acre to be built. At six-point-two-four acres, the Saint Irene's site would be limited to a maximum of thirty-seven bedrooms. There are, however, mechanisms that allow for off-site land to be restricted from development, and the bedrooms that could otherwise be built on that land to be shifted over to this parcel. It's complicated, it's expensive, it's highly regulated, lots of complexities, but it may be possible. In addition, up to ninety bedrooms would require septic and well onsite. Above that, a private waste treatment facility would need to be built, that would be onsite, and that would eliminate the bedroom limitations. The MBTA community zoning overlay on the Saint Irene's parcel creates the legal right and possibility of up to a hundred units to be developed. However, as I said, these many factors may impact the actual build-out for the site. The second site under consideration is Woodward Village. As you can see on the screen, it's a little bit more zoomed in than the last one, I apologize, but here's Bedford Road, and here are our green blob wetlands. The parcel is flanked by a thirty-two-acre open-space parcel owned by, or at least controlled by, owned by, the town. The site's developed with multiple structures and paved areas, as well as a large septic system and public drinking water supply wells. Approximately five-and-a-half acres of land is cleared, and two acres of wetlands are delineated as part of this recent build-out. A compliant MBTA community zoning overlay on Woodward Village would create the possibility that the current or future property owner could develop up to one hundred and forty-three multifamily homes on the portions of this site that are developable. Again, it's the units per acre times the number of acres. Our consulting engineer did not perform a conceptual study to evaluate the development constraints or water and wastewater requirements for development at this site due to its recent build-out for housing. The high value of the current build-out and the homeowners' association governing the property represents significant constraints on additional development in the near term. The current site plan illustrates the development constraints imposed by regulation. You can see here, there are public drinking water supply wells in this location, and there is a septic field in this location. New wells would need to be permitted, likely, possibly, within the area where the current wells exist, and additional septic capacity would need to be sited elsewhere on the site to allow for more than forty-four bedrooms that the current septic capacity allows for. At nine-point-four-six acres, Title V allows for up to fifty-six bedrooms to be built on the site without that nitrogen aggregation, that shifting of bedrooms from some other restricted place. Again, very complicated, costly, highly regulated, may or may not be possible. At ninety bedrooms and above, a waste treatment facility would need to be built on the site. Again, an MBTA community's overlay would allow for the possibility of up to one hundred and forty-three units on this site, but institutional, financial, and technical, and regulatory controls could limit the actual build-out that could be built here. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to, back to Julie.
Logan, so I did want to just give you guys some information about some of the terms that are in the zoning language. So the zoning language is nearly identical for both sites, the key differences are in the dimensional tables. We've used the term overlay quite a bit in this presentation. Overlay zoning is proposed over-based zoning, it does not remove existing property rights. This overlay will add an option for how the property can be developed. The uses that are allowed in the zoning, multifamily housing, of course, and uses that are typically accessory to multifamily residential development, such as open space, parking, and shared community spaces. So just a note for the multifamily housing, as noted earlier, there's no requirement that the zoning allows for high-rise buildings. The Planning Board has established a baseline maximum of four units per building, with the ability to waive it up to twenty-six units per building if more units per building is proven to better retain the rural character of town or allow reuse of existing structures. The dimensional tables and footnotes, which are at the end of your motions booklet, they establish lot size, density, setbacks, height, gross floor area, building coverage percentage, and open space percentage, and other metrics for how the property can be, how each property can be developed. And then there are footnotes that note where flexibility can be granted. So many of the regulations in the dimensional tables are the same as or similar to what we require or allow in the current zoning bylaw. For instance, building height of forty feet and building coverage of twenty-five percent. So this is my last slide about the zoning basics, and just so some other terms that you might see if you look through the motions booklet. We have a section for general development standards. General development standards are requirements for overall site design that provide cohesion, ensure quality of life for residents, create a sense of place, and promote best land use and environmental practices. Some examples include buildings clustered around a common outdoor space, a continuous network of pedestrian connections through a site, a landscape design that includes native plantings, and ensuring that there is no light spillover onto neighboring properties, and a requirement for screening of mechanical units. And there's a lot more detail if you look at the zoning language. The byright process for allowing a development pursuant to the zoning overlay would be the site plan review process with the Planning Board. It's a process that's currently on the books. As I mentioned earlier, it requires a butter notification, a legal ad in the newspaper, and a public hearing with the Planning Board. The Planning Board may also consult with the Historical Commission as needed. So the Planning Board has site plan review regulations already, and they include specific requirements for submittal, such as a traffic study and a stormwater report. The Planning Board is likely to promulgate specific site plan review regulations pursuant to this zoning district after town meeting, as well as design guidelines. So the Planning Board will establish design guidelines for the site, whichever site is selected, that include a certain level of detail regarding architecture and aesthetics, and they intend to start on the design guidelines within the next few months. It is important to note that the zoning also allows the Planning Board flexibility to grant waivers for certain requirements during the site plan review process if specific conditions are met. So in a few instances, the waivers are allowed, and those instances include to allow slight deviations from some of the dimensional requirements in the dimensional tables, to allow an increase in the number of units per building, as I mentioned earlier, to allow flexibility regarding the affordable units, if it can be proven that the baseline requirement for affordability is economically infeasible. And then there is a provision that allows the Planning Board to grant waivers from the general development standards section in the interest of design flexibility and overall project quality, or when site conditions render a certain requirement infeasible, and they would have to make a finding that the waivers would be consistent with the overall purpose and objectives of the zoning bylaw. So now, my understanding is that Wayne is going to make a procedural note before we continue? Is that correct?
Yes, and Joe will be coming up next, is that correct? Okay, yes. So we had a little bit of an unusual situation this time around. Usually, the preferred practice here in Carlisle is that when there's a zoning, or actually, any bylaw change, we like to have the full text of the bylaw, of the proposed bylaw amendment published in the warrant. For timing reasons, that wasn't possible this time, so the warrant was published, given the subject matter, but without the full text of the bylaw. When the full text of the bylaw was adopted by the Planning Board, October twentieth, or twenty-second, whichever date that was, we got it put up on the town website, and we did say, if anyone wished to submit any amendments, substantive amendments to the proposed language, those had to be submitted by Tuesday earlier this week, and that there would be no floor amendments proposing substantive change allowed here at town meeting. Two such amendments were proposed. The Planning Board met on Thursday evening, and in substance, with some slight changes from what was originally, the language originally proposed, but basically decided that both those amendments had some good ideas, and so they incorporated them in the exact language of the motion that is now in front of you. So it was, for the most part, there were some things left out, but they incorporated most of it, and now Mr. Gashu will be taking you through just those details. In case any of you were reading the minute details of all fourteen pages, we'll let you know what was different today from what was originally published on October twenty-second. Please.
So my name is Joe Gashu, Planning Board. I'll briefly talk about the zoning language changes that were voted on the twenty-second of October. Sorry. So in general, there were three sections of the bylaws that were affected that were amended. The first one deals primarily with light impacts on floor development areas, and I won't belabor you with reading the whole thing out, but it was basically grammatical changes in terms of how the last sentence was structured to reflect open space and the effects of light on it. As you can read here, those are what the changes are. Again, they're minute. Grammatical changes, and again, we voted on that the thirtieth, for not to incorporate these, this amendment into the main motion under Article One. The second amendment was with respect to usage of open space, particularly with regard to swimming pools and tennis courts, and was recommended to remove those from the language for the bylaws. So as you can read here, that was basically stricken out, and the remaining language for the bylaw remains the same. Again, that was voted on the thirtieth for art to incorporate the amendment into the main motion under Article One. The last change with respect to the same topic was in another section of the bylaws for residential open space, again, swimming pools and tennis courts, and the wording end was struck from the language for this particular section. That was voted on the thirtieth of October, again, for art to incorporate the amendment into the main motion under Article One.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Chris Gagis, Planning Board. Okay, so we want to thank the other boards and committees that voted for, took the time to look at this motion, and we, almost all... boards and committees voted in support of this warrant article. And, let's see, so, these are all the boards and committees that voted to support the warrant article, and only, let me see, so, almost all of them were unanimous as well. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. And do we have any further? Okay, we're done with the presentation then? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So, as we saw, actually, if we could just get those last two slides, just, I just prefer to read, make sure everyone hears them, not everyone can see. So, select board was unanimous support, no position on sites. Finance committee, 5-0, again, in favor of passage, no position on sites. Board of health, 4 to 1, in favor, but no position on sites. Conservation commission, 5 to 0, support, no position on sites. Next page. RecCom, similar unanimous. Historical commission, 4-0, support, no position on sites. Similar from council on aging and human services. Then the two that actually took positions on sites. So, environmental sustainability committee unanimously in favor of both passage and supported specifically St. Irene's. And similarly, the housing trust, again, recommends passage of the bylaw, and specifically for St. Irene's site. At this time, I would now ask if any of those boards and committees, if representatives would wish to stand up very, very briefly, and if you'd like to explain your rationale for your vote, we'll hear from those boards or committees. Let's start with the select board, and I recognize Ms. Stevens.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. My name's Christine Stevens, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the select board in support of our town's compliance with the state's MBTA zoning requirements. So whether or not we personally agree with this law, the reality is that it is, in fact, the law, as our legal counsel pointed out earlier. And really, what we wanted to point out is that we do have significant funds that come from the state that would be at risk, both in terms of grant funding, funds that we already receive for other items in town. And what we're urging you is to please vote to comply with one of the sites. Let each site stand on its merit, but do vote to comply. So if you oppose this state law on principle, and that is your right, there are appropriate productive channels to express that. You can contact your state representative, your state senator, the governor's office. You can organize, lobby, run for office, or recruit candidates to challenge them in future elections. I wanted to point out that the Massachusetts election for governor is scheduled for November 3rd, 2026. You've got one year from tomorrow. And that's how we change laws in a democracy, through political action, not by disregarding the law. So, thank you very much.
Okay. And now I recognize Mr. Cattaccio for the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Perfect. Okay. James Cattaccio, Chair of the Finance Committee. So, we wanted to put together a brief presentation to walk you through our process and analysis for MBTA compliance. So what the Finance Committee did earlier this summer was put together a worst-case scenario, for lack of a better way to put it, in terms of population growth of the town. In other words, if all of a sudden, a large population bubble just landed in town. So, what we did is, we put together an analysis of if approximately 95 units were built, two adults per unit, and then if half the units had two and a half children, what would that look like? So, what we did is, we sent a letter and reached out to each board of the town, or each department, excuse me, of the town, and asked them if 190 adults, 33 pre-K students, 60 students in K through 8, and 26 high school students suddenly showed up tomorrow, how would it impact your budget and your resources? Would you need additional resources from the town? Would you be able to manage that with your current budget? And I will say, as a small caveat, the Finance Committee did all of this without any analysis of sites. This was simply an analysis of compliance and the financial impacts. So of all the departments, almost 20 departments, four of them expressed immediate financial impact. I'll walk you through them. The Board of Health said, give or take about $30,000 of additional revenue, excuse me, of additional expense would be needed. Library also said about $30,000. Police mentioned that they were planning on adding, or at least requesting, a 14th full-time officer in fiscal year '29, but if this population increase happened suddenly, that they would likely be requesting this 14th officer sooner. Carlisle Public Schools, as I'm sure you're all aware, is likely where the bulk of this impact would be. And again, this is a estimate of a worst-case scenario, and I'd like to also say that this population increase is most, is very unlikely to happen. So, we took that impact, but the current multifamily areas in towns and neighboring towns, the population, especially the students, is much lower. There's trends showing people that are moving from their larger homes. They want to stay in town, but their children have graduated through the school system, so they downsize to smaller units. So with that said, under our hypothetical, it was about a $640,000 impact at the Carlisle Public Schools. They did say that there could be a space constraint as well, which is not factored here, something that if this were to happen and this population growth were to suddenly appear, the Finance Committee would have to work with the school. All other departments stated that they would be able to absorb this population influx under their existing budget. So, the total maximum impact is somewhere between $800,000, $850,000. I put on the bottom, the regional school, that we took a conservative assumption that the cost would be flat. And the reason being is that we are an MBTA-adjacent town. Concord is, has an MBTA station, so they actually had to zone significantly more than Carlisle would. The likelihood is, is that actually, our share of students proportionally would go down, but we took the conservative approach that the regional school would just stay flat. Now, the financial benefits. Brian McDonald, the principal assessor, calculated what we asked for as a net benefit. He did a spread between 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, and assumed netting away the current taxes that are being received by the existing structures on a zoning overlay. So, the net tax, excuse me, the net increase of tax revenue would be $830,000 at Woodward, and would be approximately $1.1 million at 187 East Street, based on his calculations. Now, FIRE also weighed in, and we saw a presentation earlier, that we, the town should have an investment in maintaining an on-call fire department. And FIRE did weigh in that if there is a sudden influx of population, there would potentially be a greater pool for additional volunteers. So financially, as we learned earlier, that is actually a benefit. Now, the financial impacts of noncompliance. It's a bit of a nebulous definition here, but what we know is that our state aid is at risk. So, 2025, state aid was approximately 5.5% of the budget, depending on how you count it, around $2 million. We would potentially lose grants like Chapter 70, which goes directly to our education, Chapter 90, which goes to our roads. There's future grants that are hard to quantify. So, we're part of the Climate Leaders Initiative in the state, and there are a lot of future grants for moving towards EVs, or whatever they might be, that might fall under that grant, that are not quantifiable today. Also, we spoke with council, and council did present earlier, litigation costs are in the tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, certainly, there are significant financial impacts to noncompliance. So the Finance Committee concluded, based on a worst-case scenario of population growth, they feel that the town would likely not be financially impacted. However, voting noncompliance would certainly have a financial impact on the town. So we unanimously support approval of compliance to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, I will ask any other town boards or committees that wanted to explain their votes to please step forward. I see a microphone, too. Let's start there.
Eric Ballas, 105 Knoll Farm, co-chair of the Environmental Sustainability Committee. The ESE unanimously favors zoning the St. Irene's parcel over the Woodward Village parcel for the following reasons. St. Irene's site promotes walkability to the town center and schools. The zoning for the site allows for mixed use and the potential for communal space. While the St. Irene's site has some wetlands, and this ecosystem should definitely be protected, these wetlands are relatively isolated when compared to the wetlands on the Woodward Village site, which connect to a very large wildlife corridor containing core and rare species habitat. Current conditions may limit the number of units on the St. Irene's site, therefore reducing the stress on water and resources. The ESE is concerned that the potential concentration of approximately 143 units on the Woodward Village site could have disproportionately larger negative impacts on water and other resources, as well as on the ecosystems in the area, especially given proximity to the Concord River and its wildlife corridors. The ESE is concerned that a full build-out at Woodward Village is possible despite obstacles. Therefore, the ESE feels St. Irene's, although not ideal, is the overall preferable option. And also, the ESE voted unanimously to support compliance with the law. The state has already withdrawn environmentally-focused funds from other noncompliant communities. For example, in August, Halifax lost a $26,000 Green Communities grant, and in September, Winthrop lost 1.2 million in climate grants. Carlisle's most recent Green Communities grant letter for school-building weatherization came with a specific warning that the funding grant would be withdrawn if we were not compliant with the law. The ESE is concerned that Carlisle could be at significant risk of losing approximately 1.3 million in Green Communities and Climate Leader funds if we don't comply with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. And at microphone four, please.
John Ballantyne, 268 Fifth Street, and co-chair of the Housing Trust. First, I want to thank all who have been working hard on this over the past year, particularly the planning board. And second, I have been involved in the housing and the housing trust as my first volunteer activity, 1985, for 40 years. And so, our mission in the housing trust is to support a more diverse housing stock throughout Carlisle, and this means both affordable and in the missing middle. And this means a Woodward Village, this means Benfield, this means the Rocky Point. So this has been our position and our view of what needs to be done in Carlisle, which is small cluster developments. If you step back and look at what's happening in the overall country, in the past 20 years, the real price of housing has gone up, doubled. So an average house in Carlisle, which cost $400,000 in 2008, is now costing over $1 million. And what has happened, and this is why the MBTA laws happened, we have a 50% drop in housing supply worldwide, I mean, countrywide. And that also means in Boston area, that we need another 300,000, 400,000 units to supply housing, which is why our cost of housing has gone up. So this is the context as we look at housing, and why we decided to support St. Irene's and cluster developments as a possibility. The law, as it's changed over the past three months, so that we only have one site rather than cluster developments, is not an easy choice. And the reason that we, and we debated this carefully over the past couple of months, is that St. Irene's probably will not be fully developed. It will be a smaller cluster that's closer to town, and it also has the possibility, as the church maintains itself, to have space for Council on Aging and Human Services in the basement. Again, none of these are for sure true, but this is where we came out as a housing trust supporting St. Irene's, that it would fit in with what Carlisle does, and begins to support some additional housing in Carlisle. We need to do more, but we're going to have to do that not through this zoning regulation, but other zoning regulations to provide it. So again, thank you, everybody, for all the work that you've done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other boards or committees that wish to explain their vote? Okay. So, move on to the next phase. As I said, I'd explain the procedures as we need them. So the next phase that we're going to move to is a question and answer period. Again, I want these to be genuine questions of fact. You may have an opinion, you may know, you may have your mind made up. We do not want to hear it right now. Just, just trying to be efficient with everyone's time. We want truly, we'd like, if you're genuinely, you know, you don't, you want to understand more about one of the sites, you want to understand more about the financial impact of saying no, whatever it might be, feel free to ask that question, and let's get the facts out on the table first. And then, we will open the floor to debate, and we'll talk about the rules for that when we get there. So, we'll start with Q and A. You get up to one minute, as always, less time is better. The questions are addressed to me, and I will decide whether to, they'll be answered and figure out who's going to answer them. Your questions can go not just to the planning board, but if there's any board or committee in town, or a staff member that you feel might have, be able to give insight, not just to you, but for the benefit of everyone, feel free to pose those questions as well. So what we will do is, we've got our five microphones here in the auditorium, and again, if anyone needs to have a mic brought to them, we can do that, as well as our microphone in Benfield. And we're just going to go, please line up in advance, and we will just go around. I'm not quite sure how long we're going to spend on this Q and A, but we'll start with, say, 20 minutes and see how we're going, and take it from there. So, let's start with microphone one. You have one minute.
Hi. Debbie Bentley, 128 Heald Road. This primarily goes to 80's presentation. I just was, they found the plan of St. Irene's very difficult to comprehend. Could you clarify the footprint of the buildings that were, there seemed to be two buildings or two projects shown on one plan, but they're a lot bigger, I think, than what is allowed under the bylaws? So, that was the question, is what's right?
Okay. Thank you. So if we could bring that up, and
Debbie.
And if you, just as a hint to the cursor, and we'll fix this next time around, but the cursor actually is also difficult to see, so if you're pointing to something on the map, and Matt, if we could bring the map up, if you could orient, just tell people where to even look for the cursor, upper left, lower right, whatever, that'll be helpful.
Got it.
Thank you.
So Debbie, and everyone, this analysis was done to try to see what could maximally be done on this site. You can see, I'm just going to point out where the writing is here on the right-hand side, that there are a couple of notes that were written in black, and then they were stricken in red and replaced in red. And again, it was because this was done sort of once at a lower density, and then a second time at a higher density, with the intent of trying to see what could be possible here sort of maximally. And yes, you're absolutely right that those buildings don't necessarily comply with the bylaw in terms of the number of units per building, et cetera, but the waivers are allowed to be, you know, if there's a compelling reason to allow for more units in a building up to 26, then that can be done. I'll just say, too, that there was a timing mismatch between, as we were zeroing in on the language of the bylaw that we were proposing, while at the same time trying to do this sort of like maximum study, the timing was just off. So in terms of the number of units that we are going to be allowing maximally per building that we could get to with a waiver process, this work was being done separately.
Thank you. At microphone two.
Hi. Peter Lively.
Hi, Peter Lively, 1265 Westford Street. So my question is, are we sure that the MBTA will accept these proposed sites if we approve them? And would they push back and say, well, the other zoning requirements, like setbacks, square footage, things like that, are unacceptable? And so, what protections would we have that the zoning board wouldn't just waive those in order to get approval from the state?
Okay. So who would like to answer that one? Town council? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ethan Dively, Associate Town Council of Harrington Heep. My partner, Tom Harrington, and I have spoken at great length with HLC and with the Attorney General's Office, and working with Julie and their compliance consultant. We're confident that these proposals, you know, will satisfy HLC's compliance model and should be acceptable, you know? If, for some reason, HLC comes back with further questions or concerns, Tom and I are on top of it, and we're here to defend the town and answer any follow-up questions to continue a dialogue, but we don't see that being a problem.
Thank you. And then, let's do, is there anyone in back? I just have difficulty seeing.
No.
No? Okay, good. So then, we're on to microphone four.
Hi, Karen Lennon, 88 Hubble Bush Lane. I actually have the same exact question, so just wanted to plus one on that question, and that answer was very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Well then, behind you, we'll take another one at microphone four.
Peter Yakudis, 12 K's Walk at Woodward Village. Did the Planning Board, I think it would be the Planning Board, did they have any information about how the condo association, the HOA, could actually be bought out? Does it have to be 100%, or if it's 75%, are there 25% of the units that potentially essentially lose their home through something like eminent domain?
Who's, Town Council for that? Okay, please.
Thank you, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So, the condo documents are private documents amongst the condominium owners. So, what they say, they say, and it's for your group to decide how they apply to each homeowner. I suspect it would require some sort of supermajority vote to change them. I do not see as a power of a condominium association eminent domain, all right? So, the condominium association typically controls the common areas, but not the units. And I have never heard of a condominium association being able to take someone's unit from them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We don't have anyone in the cafeteria, so let's continue with microphone five.
Amelia Fournier, 745 East Street. So, my question is, where are the terms governing the use of the adjacent conservation land of K's Walk? And how does that restrict using adjacent land for nitrogen credits and well-water usage?
So, well, that's an interesting question. Planning Board, are you able to answer? And I would just, if there are members of the Conservation Commission or anyone else associated with the town who believes they could answer that, we could also get your opinion, but we'll look to Planning Board first. Okay, Town Council?
Tom Harrington, Town Council. So, the open space that was just mentioned is under the town's control. It would therefore require this body to approve of any use of that property, and Article 97 concerns may be in play. It may require approval of the legislature. But it can only be done by vote of this, to start with, by vote of this body.
If you could just stay there for a moment, I want to make sure that that actually addressed the question. If I understood the question correctly, you weren't asking about the open space within the parcel, but the adjoining town-owned land that is conservation land. Did I understand your question correctly?
Yes, I'm asking about whether it's restricting being able to use any land beyond that conservation area. So, is it completely enveloped in that it won't be able, we won't, for nitrogen credit or something like that, that any other land next door to that would be able to be used for the...
Okay. So we're asking actually about the adjacent land, not the land in Woodward Village. It may be helpful to see that.
So, this may be a somewhat unsatisfying answer, but, so, this is a Board of Health requirement that requires that the credits be on adjacent land. So, if the town doesn't control the adjacent land, we don't have a say in it.
But the town does control land adjacent to this site.
My understanding is that that's not the parcel she's talking about.
Can I clarify one more time? So, what I'm talking about, does that conservation land, that envelops K's Walk, that prevent any other land being used to go towards nitrogen credits, or to be bought and used towards well-water, well-location, that sort of thing?
Sorry for the confusion, everyone. It's, open space is something that is defined as part of a development and was part of the permitting for K's Walk, and then there's also conservation and restricted land on adjacent parcels. So, I want to make sure everyone understands, and I'm not even sure which one we're talking about.
Yeah, so, so, consultation, we believe she's talking about land that's beyond the town ownership.
Okay. Beyond town ownership.
So, beyond what the town controls, outside of what the town controls, is that the land that you're questioning?
Well, I'm just trying to say, because there's that border around Woodward Village, that's all conservation land, town-owned.
Right.
Does that mean that we cannot use any land that's outside, they wouldn't be able to, a developer wouldn't be able to buy land beyond that, because it's completely around the...
So that would get to the definition of adjoining, and that would be for the Board of Health to determine. But the town land, the land that the town controls, is under the town's control, and only this body could approve the use of that land.
So can the Board of Health answer that, then?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm just wondering if the Board of Health would be able to answer that question, then?
They, I won't even go there, because the Board of Health has been very clear that they're not going to prejudge anything before something's in front of them. Board of Health, correct me if I'm wrong on that. Okay, Mr. Mariano?
Tony Mariano, 1134 North Road, Vice Chair, Board of Health. I just want to clarify a few things. Wayne's absolutely right. We can't, ahead of time, give buy-in or any kind of conceptual approval to anything, because we could have problems in the future if developers came before us and said, you've already, in a public process, approved this. So we're avoiding that in many situations that relate to this. On another note, the nitrogen credit land that could happen is through Title V, not through the Board of Health, and we would only administer it as Title V allows us to. And that can be land that's adjacent and/or proven to be within the same aquifer. In other words, the area that provides the water to those wells.
Okay, thank you. We now have some questions from the cafeteria, so let's go there.
Hi, Gabrielle Docterman, again. Hats off to everyone who has worked on this really complex problem we have. I understand the zoning is all we're talking about right now, but what if down the line we have to actually implement this, and it doesn't work out on the place that we pick, you know, for ledge, or the people there don't want to be, don't want it? What happens, then?
Planning Board, could you address that, please?
Yes, so as we mentioned before, it is the parcel owner's choice, whether or not to develop or not. And another thing to keep in mind is that there are a lot of constraints that could change what could actually be built. So when you say it doesn't work out on that particular site, essentially, whoever was trying to develop one of these parcels would have to, you know, they would always have to, they always have to follow Title V. So if there's ledge and they maybe can't build as many units as they wanted to, it would be up to them to decide what to do, whether or not it's still financially feasible to do the full build-out. It would probably get moderated, like you said, if there were a lot of ledge, or if, you know, the new wetlands, you know, expanded over time. There's lots of things that could change, but that's really up to the developer to work out and then go from there. And again, Title V, building codes, all these regulations still always apply, and they will moderate what actually gets built.
Okay, thank you. Back to microphone two, please.
And my question revolves around Ted Brewster, Davis Road, around the data that we heard on the impact to the schools and our population for this particular project. But my question is, what would those numbers look like if we add in the other 75 apartments that are now being built as part of the accessory apartment regulation, which I estimate would add about 125 students to the school system?
Is that FinCom? Sure, thank you.
James Cattaccio, Chair of the Finance Committee. We didn't add that into the analysis, so quite frankly, I can't comment towards that. We just kept our analysis simply to this warrant.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, do we, we have another question at microphone five? Oh, I'm sorry, the Planning Board wanted to further address that one? Okay. Okay. And please make sure you get closer to the microphone, sir.
Sure. So the gentleman suggested that there are 75 units currently under construction. That's not the case. ADUs are now permitted by right, but we don't have 75 currently under construction. It's up to each individual parcel owner if they would like to apply, if they would like to come before the Planning Board for site plan review for an ADU. So I don't want people to get the, I don't want people to proceed with the thought that these are already under construction. That is not the case.
Okay, thank you. Microphone five, please.
Hello, I'm Fiona Anderson Bell at ADU Blaisdell. And my question is, will St. Irene's be torn down? Torn down?
Okay, the question was, could you please just slowly enunciate it? Thank you.
Will St. Irene's be torn down?
And to whom is that question being addressed?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay, well then...
You had, you had all these...
Tell you what, let me answer the question then. That is not up to anyone in this town. St. Irene's, like every home owned by everyone or rented by people living here, it's up to the owner of that property to decide what they want to do. The zoning bylaw does not require any current landowner to do anything with their property.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay. Back to the cafeteria.
Hi, Sean Flynn, 107 Woodbine Road. At a Planning Board meeting, the Town Council said that they could do a zoning overlay for part of a lot. They said it would be difficult, and they didn't want to do it, but they said it was legally feasible to do that, to just do part of a lot. So they could zone part of the overlay for K's Walk or St. Irene's to limit it to 95 units. Is there a reason why that wasn't done?
Okay, take a moment for the Planning Board to figure out who should answer that?
Yep. So, at the, one of the Planning Board meetings, they, the question was put forth to the Town Council, whether they could do a zoning overlay for part of a lot instead of the entire lot. And after some consulting back and forth, they said, yes, they could do it. It would be difficult, it would be problematic, but they could just do 6.33 acres to achieve the 95 units that the law requires.
So I'm not sure if that's a question or a comment, but the answer is, and again, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So it may be possible to divide a lot and zone just a part of it. It wasn't my advice at the Planning Board hearing that we do that. It's still not my advice that we do that. Split lot zoning becomes difficult and can be, there can be some unintended consequences with how the lot is used. It's my opinion that the lots that were selected are the whole lot. That's the best way forward, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with that opinion.
Okay. So, at this point, I'm seeing two people, and a third one. So, if anyone else is going to have a question, move to a microphone now. Otherwise, when we finish, these three people, okay, so now we're up to four. And if anyone else in the cafeteria, please move to the microphone right away, because we'll move to debate once the questions are done, okay? So back to microphone five, and then we'll come around here. Okay, oh, okay, yes. We'll bring a microphone to you next, if you want. Okay, so you'll be, you'll be next up, okay? Microphone five now, and Sarah, if you could bring, get the microphone back.
Sarah Wengert, 65 Pagebrook Road. I was just hoping someone on the Planning Board could just confirm that I'm correct understanding for a place like Woodward Village, that it's all or nothing zoning. So it's either one option or the other, so that either all of the houses would have to be changed, or none of the houses would change.
Oh.
Is it her?
So yes, it needs to be one or the other, but that does not necessarily mean that if the owners decided to use a new MBTA zoning overlay option, they, doesn't hold them to build the full build-out. So...
Thank you. Over here, sir.
Dan Barlow, 201 Hanover Road. I was just wondering on St. Irene's if there's approval for St. Irene's, and St. Irene's keeps the land and develops some housing. Would they pay taxes on that land?
So the answer to that question really goes to what is the housing being used for? We often house priests or ministers on the site of the church. That's part of the religious use. If it's not for someone working for the church... the church, it would likely be taxed.
Okay, thank you. Back to microphone one.
Yeah, Charles Blake, 127 Carlton Road. And I guess this is for the Health Board, Board of Health. In terms of the water quality, I know that there's an MBTE problem in the middle of town. And I've heard, read a few years ago that this was trickling down towards the church. And I don't know if that's been looked at in terms of a possible issue when they start building all these homes and using that water.
Is that, can the Board of Health respond to that, please?
So this, like any other building or development, would be subject to water quality testing to determine approval of wells. And because it would be a public water supply because of the large density of the development, it would be regulated by the state, and they have stringent water quality testing that has to be done ahead of time. So if there was some lingering issues from the, from the plume of the spill in the center of town that happened decades ago, that would enter into the approval process for the well that would be put in.
Okay, so you're, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite, you said, if there are lingering issues-
Yes.
You're saying it's not known at this point whether there are or not. Is that correct?
Correct. There hasn't been any current, current day testing of the St. Irene's area, and really, the only testing spot would be the current existing well. And they don't currently have an MBTE compliance problem.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. At microphone two, please.
Dan Boyanich, 93 Clark Swamp Road. I'd just like some clarification on a couple of earlier questions, and that is, with St. Irene's parish, there is one decision maker to sell, and that is the Catholic Church. With respect to Woodward Village, how many decision makers are there? Does it have to be every single resident says yes in order for that to sell? Could we have clarification?
Town Council, please.
So there's, there's not a simple answer to that question. We don't know who owns and controls what at Woodward Village. I'm sorry you're frustrated with that answer. That's the answer. They have their own process. So there's the parcels in question, are the parcels owned by each unit owner, and the common area. So whatever their decision-making process is, and how they change that decision-making process over time, because they can change their decision-making process without communicating that to us, so their process is their process. I can't tell you what it is, because it's privately owned, and they get to control their process privately.
So it's down to the residents to decide? Is that what you're saying?
It's down to the owners of the land at Woodward Village, which would be the owners of the units, and the trustees of the condominium trust who control the common area of the condominium.
Thank you.
Okay, and microphone four, please.
Brian Cruz, 71 Rogers Road. This is regarding Kay's Walk. I'm not sure if maybe Concom or Board of Health are the best people to answer this. It's regarding the fact that there is sewer on the other side of the river in Bedford. And what I'm wondering is, what are the practical, as well as potential environmental regulatory feasibility issues with bringing sewer across the river? Is that something that is a potential in the future? Is it wholly impractical? How would that work if it could work?
Does anyone from Planning Board want to address that? No? I guess the answer is, we can all guess what the cost and environmental implications would be of bringing sewer line underneath the Concord River. Was there someone in the back? Yes, okay. I'm sorry, it's really difficult for me to see back there, so I can't, I can't even see where someone is.
Hi, my name is Inge Abel, 257 Low Street. I have a question, but I need to explain why I ask such a question. So my question is for the Planning Board. Has the board done any survey, or is the board aware of any survey being done regarding to the usage of MBTA route potentially being built? The reason I'm asking is that assuming this MBTA is an entasement, we assume that people would come from Boston without a car, and then they all of a sudden bought a house in the suburb, and they have to go back to Boston to work. So based on my experience, I would say I don't see anyone driving to L Y station and park their car to work unless they are not afraid of being late. MBTA is famous for not running their schedule on time, so I can't, I can't use MBTA.
Okay, so if I could please just try to clarify your question. Are you asking whether there is any expectation that the MBTA will build infrastructure?
No, sorry, sorry.
What are you asking?
I'm asking, are there any expectation of any of these 95 units will end up using the MBTA to work from Carlisle to Boston or New Bedford? I don't know. I want to see if there has been any survey done on their MBTA project, or it's just an entasement? It's an introduction to a law? Nothing else?
Okay, thank you. We'll have the Planning Board address that.
It's not for us to determine whether or not people would actually use MBTA. I do, by the way, I take the train from Concord. We're complying with the law. The law says we have to do this.
Okay, at microphone five.
Cindy Kraft, 75 Patch Meadow Lane. If a developer were able to purchase St. Irene's and an abutting lot, would it be possible for them to site their wells and/or wastewater treatment plant, allowing for complete build out on the St. Irene's parcel?
Could the Planning Board address that, please? Or the Town Council?
The answer is yes, it's possible.
Okay, and it looks like our last person is waiting at microphone two. Okay, and then we're gonna move to debate after that. But don't hop up yet, wait till I give you some instructions. But if you're thinking that you want to say something, please start writing down notes so that you can be very succinct and impactful. At microphone two.
Catherine Boylan, 135 Kimball Road. I'm just curious if, if the build out goes through, and then for some reason, Board of Health-wise, environmental-wise, all of the units, all the 95 units can't be built? Is there something in the mandate, like a stipulation or provision, or is there any insight or understanding what would happen if all of the units can't get built? Does that mean that more zoning has to happen? Is there an actual mandate that the 95 units have to be built?
We'll have the Planning Board just answer that.
No, there is not.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the debate. As I had said, we are at, at the debate portion. Again, I'm going to ask people to move to the microphones. Now, again, since I said, this was an hour ago, so it should be far from your brain, so I'll put it back in. We're on motion one, which is the choice between St. Irene's and Kay's Walk slash Woodward Village. So what that means is that if in your heart of hearts you would like to stand up and tell the meeting that we should vote to stuff it to the state, you will get your opportunity to say that, but not now. That's gonna be later. So for now, I would like people to, what we're gonna be debating is, St. Irene's is a great site, or St. Irene's is a terrible site, Woodward Village is a great site, or whatever you want to say. That's what we're going to do. And the rules are going to be, you get two minutes, you only get to speak once. You know, if only three people want to speak, and then you want to speak a second time, fine, but I think we're gonna have more than three people. All right? So it's just gonna be one bite at the apple. That's why I say be succinct. Now, to start off the floor debate, I'm going to recognize Pam Atkins, who is representing a group of people who are neighbors and abutters of St. Irene's. Under my rules of procedure that I've had in place here for more than 10 years, I've said that I would recognize if there's an organized opposition group that would like to present, and we basically negotiate over what they can do. They, I'm allowing them to use slides because they believe that showing some maps and visuals are important, and I, in my discretion, I've determined to do that. And we're giving them a little bit more than two minutes, but they cut it down at my request, and so I think we'll, we'll proceed. I recognize Ms. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Pam Atkins, and I live at 40 Hillside Road. I am here today representing the neighbors and abutters of 187 East Street. We are 25 neighboring or abutting households to 187 East Street, the current site of St. Irene's Catholic Church. We strongly oppose zoning overlay on 187 East Street, which would make the site eligible for a build of 95 housing units. 187 East Street was not considered as a single-site option for 95 units until October 2025. Proper research and due diligence has not been performed for the site. In the following slides, we'll share the reasons why we believe that St. Irene's is not the right site for the MBTA bylaw. Number one is water. Both the quality and availability of water has been a common concern of all the sites throughout this process. St. Irene's is steps from Zone A, and it's a location that was not recommended for a build by the Board of Health at a Planning Board meeting. No water testing has been done at 187 East to evaluate capacity or contamination. The potential effects on the surrounding neighbors are unknown, and no protections are in place for the community if issues arise. Water assessment should have been a critical component of the evaluation of the site, and without it, we cannot vote for 187 East Street to be included in the bylaw. This is a site plan that was provided by Hancock Associates, and includes information about the well and septic, with what's there now, and what would need to be there in the future, nitrogen loading, parking, and more. The plan was done on September 10th to measure the needs for 30 units. The red writing overlay represents a 60-unit evaluation. This also includes environmental impacts that were identified. Significant earthwork and management of biodiversity and stormwater runoff are necessary at this site. However, the impact and needs of a 95-unit site are still unknown, including the impact to the area when added more wells and additional septic capacity. The consultant did not provide a publicly-available site plan to assess the impacts of a 95-unit build. Abutter impact. So according to the Planning Board's SES, there is somewhat limited number of direct abutters. In fact, in their own scorecard, the Planning Board gave 187 East Street a 1.7 overall score for a abutter impact, including a score of 1 for distance from a abutters on a scale of 1 to 3, with 1 being okay, 2 being good, and 3 being very good. There are eight lots abutting the St. Irene's property on the map, as well as many other lots stacked around those within this neighborhood. We feel that the abutters are misrepresented in the SES. And I'd also like to mention a prominent neighbor. Directly across the street from St. Irene's is the Carlisle Kids' House, a childcare center that I'm sure many people in this room are familiar with. What are the potential impacts on the center if there are water issues due to a build across the street? The health and safety of children should be of utmost concern when deciding how to vote today. We should also consider the safety of their employees, as well as protecting one of Carlisle's few local businesses. Topic. 95 units, 1 and 1/2 parking spots per unit, is more than 140 additional vehicles driving down East Street every day, concentrated in an area that's about 1/3 of a mile from the intersection of Bedford and East. Not to mention their visitors, Amazon, UPS deliveries, food deliveries, construction, contractor vehicles. It's also unclear where those visitors will park. Will they park on East Street, or will they end up on one of the nearby site streets like Cutters Ridge or Blaisdell? The stretch of land is congested already at several times during the day, during the morning commute, during the morning drop-off, in the afternoons when buses from the school drop off kids at the Kids' House, and of course, during the afternoon commute as well. With no traffic study publicly available, we question if the stop sign at East in Bedford will be enough to control the increase in traffic at the intersection. And just to comment on the walkability, yes, St. Irene's is definitely walkable to the town center, but we'd like to think about the safety of the existing sidewalk, which in some areas doesn't have a curb and is kind of just more of a shoulder. The vast increase in traffic concentrated in this one area will likely make the sidewalk unsafe to travel on. Last December, the Planning Board stated in regards to church properties, including St. Irene's, that whatever is zoned for may eventually happen. A strategy that involves zoning for large-scale buildings requires a great deal more consideration. See the chart that lists how 187 East Street was discussed in Planning Board meetings over the past couple of months. In August, it was considered for fewer units. In September, it was not included in one-site option discussions. In early October, it was discussed as potentially feasible, and on October 20th was chosen as a potential site for the MBTA bylaw. We do not feel that a great deal of consideration was given to include 187 East Street as a 95-unit option for the MBTA bylaw. In conclusion, I would like to ask my fellow neighbors and abutters of 187 East Street to stand so that the community can see who we are. You probably recognize, and whatever room you're in, if you would stand, if you're able. Some of us have lived here for a short time, and some of us have been here for many years. But all of us are engaged members of this community, and we care about Carlisle, and that's why we're here. We urge you, please, do not choose 187 East Street for inclusion in the MBTA bylaw, and not just for us, but for the entire benefit of the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So as we said, as I said, you can now move to the microphones, and we'll just be rotating around as we need to. Two minutes, and everyone, please stay civil. And again, we're, we're on the choice between St. Irene's or Woodward Village. Okay, it looks like we've got someone at microphone two first is ready, so let's go there.
All right, hi, everyone. Dan Harges, 133 Partridge Lane. So first of all, I'll start, I'm in opposition to the St. Irene's development, and am in favor of Kay's. I want to give a little bit of that kind of background and data and some rationale behind this. So, and a lot of this has been alluded to earlier, but the Archdiocese of Boston, who owns St. Irene's, a lot to center consideration. Since 2004, they've sold off roughly 65 churches in all surrounding areas, so going all the way from Boston out to Framingham. We weren't able to pull data on what happened to all of these sites, but of 30 of those 65, 72% have been used for housing. The housing that's been developed there has ranged from two-family units all the way up to condo units out to about 108 units. I think the average unit density on those churches that were developed was about 65. So what that was telling us is that there is, if St. Irene's moves forward, like what was commented earlier, especially if there's an opportunity to buy and- like what was commented earlier, especially if there's an opportunity to buy an abutting lot to accomplish the nitrogen offset, there's a high likelihood that that developer could option to sell and move that to development relatively soon. And as what was, you know, so recently just discussed, we are, you know, as abutters to the area, generally concerned about the water impacts of that area if such a high-density development would be put into place in that area. So we just ask that everyone sort of, you know, obviously, we're a community here, but we see the K's option as potentially a slower development opportunity, and we're definitely sympathetic with folks in the room that want to see additional housing built in the town to support the sort of obvious need for increased housing. But by going with the K's option as opposed to St. Irene's option, we see that as a slower route that potentially gives us more control over how we develop the housing in sort of a safe, effective means for the community that doesn't impact water to abutters, and it's something we can kind of control as a town together. So that's all I wanted to say. I'll, I'll leave the microphone.
Okay, thank you very much. At microphone 3, but before I start, just to remind everyone, I will give a light tap when you've got 15 seconds to go, except if you're just like the prior gentleman who was wrapping up right at a minute 40 seconds. Brilliantly timed. Thank you. Microphone 3.
Yes, thank, thank you very much. I'm David Arenthal. I'm a recent resident to Carlisle. We moved here two or three months ago, in fact. I'm so recent that I'm ineligible to vote on this, so I needed to disclose that before I spoke. We moved here--
And, oh, you know, and something I'm just-- I just, I failed to say it because I said I'm not going to go through all the procedures, but normally, only people who are registered to vote may speak at a town meeting. That's the usual rule. However, it is moderator's discretion, and you're part of the community, so I'm going to go ahead, but if, if anyone else is here not registered to vote, you must please disclose that and give me the chance.
Do I still have--
There's a developer or something, I may say no, but for you--
Yeah.
Please proceed, and sorry to interrupt.
First of all--
And welcome to your first Carlisle town meeting.
I'm excited. I, I, I first want to express an appreciation for the rigor that went through the process of selecting the sites. It's, it's very impressive. It reminds me of sort of an algorithm. But I, I sense that there's something very important that is missing from that algorithm, and that is that the, the project of K's Walk or Woodward Village where I live began in 2018 as a very innovative environmental sustainability project. And it is a bit ironic that as Carlisle took the position to advance a sustainability project, that we're now, now facing a situation where that sustainability project is sort of being cast aside through a rezoning. All of us are recent arrivals. We came here because of the sustainability theme. And I just wanted everybody in this room, we all have choices to make. It's an important choice. I want you to just be aware that Woodward Village was created with a very specific theme, and that theme was environmental sustainability. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, microphone 4.
Hi, I'm Patricia Wolf. I'm at 12 K's Walk, so you can imagine what I'm going to be saying. To add to David, yes, Woodward Village is a community. We are a group of people that are gelling, that are coming together, and have all came to Carlisle because we, we want to be here, and we want to create that sustainability. And the same issues that would face St. Irene's are going to face Woodward Village. The vast number of cars, the, you know, just the traffic, the water, the sewage, everything is the same. So I feel like us as new residents that were so excited about moving in and creating a community are being thrown under the bus. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anyone at microphone 5. Do we have anyone in the cafeteria? Nope. Okay, so back to microphone 1, please.
Ray Modine, Berry Corner Road. I'd like to say a few words about St. Irene. First of all, prefacing my remarks by saying, if you zone that property, it is very likely it will get sold and that church will be demolished because the Archdiocese has had a history of selling high-value properties, and the value will go way up. So to that end, I would like to speak about what the loss of the church would mean for our parishioners and charitable activities. Each week, St. Irene contributes to the Open Table Food Drive, which is quite appropriate in today's political environment. Right now, the annual work, winter coat drive and Thanksgiving dinner drives are just beginning. We provide support to Rosie's Place in Boston. We provide infant clothes to the Pregnancy Care Center in Lowell. St. Irene also supports charitable projects around the world. We funded the construction of an environmentally sustainable biogasification plant in Rwanda after the genocide and the deforestation there. We funded fresh spring water projects for the Imak Whale Community and the Luthaso Primary School in Kenya. When the Concord Shelter on Route 2 closed, we purchased backpacks and water bottles for the children of the Haitian migrants entering school this fall, and not one were left out. Many of us who were here back in 1997 will help to fund and build that church, especially expecting that it would remain an enduring fixture in, in our community and a spiritual home for generations yet to come. We need to consider far more than just what may get built on 6 and 1/4 acres. We need to think about what's already there and what we may lose. Case in point, the planning board decided not to zone Kimball's Ice Cream due to their concern about losing a valued community institution. So I ask you, how do you feel, how do you feel about St. Irene as a valued community institution? Do we want to keep it in Carlisle? If your answer is yes, I ask you to vote no to zoning St. Irene.
Thank you. Do we have someone at microphone 3? Okay, great, thank you.
My name is Jim Fierens, and I live at 125 Meadowbrook with my wife Kim and daughter Sophia and Charlotte. Our backyard borders St. Irene's, and our house is about 75 steps away from the property line. Amazingly, and I'm not proud to say this, I still somehow am late to church on many Sundays. But the point is that the proposed site is very close to our house, and the decisions could have a significant impact on our lives, and so I'd like to make a few comments. The proposal is to zone for apartment buildings for 400 people and 150 cars in our backyard. This adds 10% of the population of Carlisle within shouting distance of our house. We moved to Carlisle for much of the same reason as many other people. It is peaceful and quiet. We get to live among the trees. I really feel fortunate to be able to live in Carlisle. It is a great place with great people. If this St. Irene's site is developed, and certainly no one is certain that it won't be, I'm concerned about many things: pollution of the water, noise from the many added people and cars, the dumpsters that is described in the zoning regulation that would probably be placed adjacent to our backyard. In other similar developments, like Benfield Farms and K's Walk, the site was carefully chosen to minimize the impact on the community. Both of these have unoccupied land surrounding most of the property. This is not the case for St. Irene's. The scorecard that you've seen in previous presentations shows that this option is the worst of any choice in terms of impact on a butters. The St. Irene's site includes about 45 homes and a daycare center within 1,000 feet of the property line. And please recall that if the St. Irene's site is chosen, the nearby neighbors will have no control and no way to prevent the property from being developed. And so I'd appreciate one thing. When it comes time to vote, please consider this. How would you feel if you were in this situation? Would you vote for a large apartment complex to be added to your backyard less than 100 steps from your house? If the answer is no, please make your choice in a way that minimizes this impact on fellow town citizens. This really should be a priority of this decision. I certainly appreciate--
Please wrap up.
I certainly appreciate the near-for-moored housing in Massachusetts, but St. Irene's is not the right site for this. Please don't vote for St. Irene's. Thank you.
Okay, at microphone 4, please.
So I'm Peter Yucudus at 12 K's Walk. And, you know, I guess we're coming off as much less well-prepared. Sorry for that. We came late to the game. We're new to town, although my wife and I have been here for over two years. Yes, K's Walk is exactly the kind of development that Carlisle should be promoting. Just exactly. It's, it's a small community. It's walkable. It's very environmentally conscious. It's net-zero buildings. You have to realize that these buildings, our home, gets torn down if this gets developed. I mean, we get, we get our, our home, we lose our home. Okay? I mean, I appreciate the butters having something built next to them. And in St. Irene's, the, the diocese can sell it. You can't stop that. Okay? So, I mean, you're at risk, period, no matter what. It's not clear to me, even from town council, that it would require 100% of the condominium owners to decide to sell. So if 75%, say, decide, get an offer from a developer and want to sell, then I could be evicted from my home. I don't want to sell there. I, I bought into K's Walk because I love it. It's a community that's actually vibrant. Right now, 14, 14 homes are already occupied, and the 15th is under construction. This is what you'd be risking ripping apart. Why risk ripping apart a community? I don't see that happening at St. Irene's. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to microphone 1, and again, I want to remind people, please move to the microphones if you want to speak. Microphone 1.
Hi, Debbie Bentley, 128 Hild Road. I'm not on a butter, but I do have friends that live in both locations. I want to address the fact that, that having denser, higher density in the center of town is actually beneficial to towns. We, you know, means more customers for local businesses. It means kids can walk to schools. There'll be more life in the center of town. We currently got a, a shop that's not functioning. This is actually, could be a real benefit. But what would happen if we moved the center of town to K's Walk? That's all. I mean, that, we would have two centers of town because 95 units or every number of units gets built because we've all established that not the number of units could get built, could get built. You know, it would hap, we would change the way of Carlisle. So I just want to, it's something beyond, this is my, my neighborhood. It's, this is our town, and what do we want for the best of our town where the development should occur, if it ever occurs?
Thank you. Microphone 2, please.
Hi, Peter Lively, 1265 Westford Street. So I think this is a comment overall about this whole process is developers will develop. I lived in Southie before I moved to Carlisle, and they tore the town apart building new buildings. They're going to build whatever is zoned, they will build. They'll find a way to build as many units as possible on the land. So you might say, oh, there's only three acres that is buildable because of wetlands. Well, guess what? They can still build the 96. They're allowed by, by the zoning. I was reading through it, and they can still do that. It doesn't say only 16 per acre, on each acre. It's 16 per acre of the lot, right? So they can still build whatever they want. And I didn't get this, the, when I asked the question about whether the zoning board had, you know, what their flexibility on giving waivers was, and that wasn't answered very well, so. And then the, and to give you an example, at K's Walk, they said 14 units. So say the developer has to pay them $20 million to get them to move out. Well, guess what? They're going to make like $100 million selling that as, as units. So it's, it's, there's a lot of profit to be made. And then also, at St. Irene's, all the, you know, all this construction, abutters, they're going to see their price, their home value drop, and so the, the builders will be incentivized to buy them out and then put something else on perhaps. So this isn't just going to be that lot. It's also going to impact the adjacent abutters and potentially force them out, whether they want to go or not.
Thank you. Okay, microphone 3, please.
Hi, my name's Kim Tresh, and I live at 125 Meadowbrook Road, and I want to thank everyone for blood, sweat, and tears that's gone on up to this day. However, that said, my property is, backs up to St. Irene's, so I'm an abutter. So I don't think St. Irene's should be the site for a massive 95-unit build. It's just not the right housing for Carlisle. Many of my neighbors have expressed the same opinion. And a slide said there's only eight abutters, but the lots are pretty choppy. And so if you just go out two to three football fields, you quickly get about 30 houses that surround St. Irene's property. And I thought it would just be fun to know who these people are. So we have people, this neighborhood is longstanding, so their, their contributions past and present are an Outstanding Citizen of the Year, two Conservationists of the Year. We've got Carlisle mosquito workers, some who have may taken your picture or put your ads in the paper. Carlisle Trails Committee volunteers, Old Home Day volunteers, town meeting tech helpers, one of the inventors of the first sixth-grade spaghetti supper, of course, seventh-grade play producers and volunteers, teachers at the Carlisle Public School, school association members, Carlisle business owners, military vets, of course, child team coaches, lots of school volunteers, parents and teachers of CPS and CCHS, and of course, our large childcare center, the Carlisle Kids' House, which many of us have used. My point is, we're not better, no one here is better than anyone, any citizen, but there's just a lot of us. There's a big concentric neighborhood with Blaisdell, Meadowbrook, Partridge, East, Cutters Ridge around St. Irene's with about 30 houses and people who've lived there and given decades of service to this town. St. Irene's affects so many people. Therefore, I do not think that St. Irene's for the MBTA 95-unit proposal with all its likely well-subject traffic problems is an appropriate choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone at microphone 4? No, microphone 5. Back to microphone 1 then.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ken Mustello, Kimball Road. I only have two comments to make, and the first comment is that we need to recognize that what we are talking about here is by right zoning at 15 units per acre that we are going to give some landowner. Nothing we're deciding today precludes doing development under the normal rules and procedures in a democratic way that we always do. The other developments we have here have all been done that way. And the second point I need to make is, I am extremely sensitive to abutters. Okay? Not so much the property that's getting rezoned, but the people who have to live with the consequences of what that landowner decides. In the case of St. Irene's, the landover is the Archdiocese of Boston. They have a history of selling properties when they need to raise money. This move will raise the value of that property, jeopardizing a church that has been in this town for 60 years. Okay? So we have to consider that. Now, in regard to K's Walk, I'm sympathetic to the owners there, but understand this, you are the owners. If you don't want anything to happen, you just don't have to let it happen. You have control of what happens there. The abutters at St. Irene's have no control whatsoever on what happens. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Microphone 5, and I've got no one in the cafeteria or at Benfield, so final call at the bar. Microphone 5.
Francis Bordon from Curves Street. So I'm not on a butter to any of those properties. And it is important to be considerate, and I don't-- It seemed like the person talking before me clarified some points I was wondering about, that the, all the rules and regulations of the town will still apply to any development of those properties. It's not like we're giving up any, all the controls. We have Board of Health, the Conservation Commission. We have all these regulation board to look over whatever development will happen on those properties. And I think it's a matter of being afraid to change, of the change, any change. It's always-- always, always creates anxiety, but I don't want to be voting on, by fear. I think that's always a bad way, is to make a decision out of fear, and I think we should consider coolly that things will work out.
Thank you. At microphone one, please.
Carly Cox, 318 Maple Street. I'd just like to say that, you know, we look at the two different options here, I'm not in a butter to either of them, although I live on Maple Street, but not anywhere close to Woodward Village. The options here are zoning St. Irene's, which is owned by the Archdiocese of Boston, that could sell it, most likely based on what other people have said, probably have a high likelihood to sell it. They might have some challenges with the zoning that is placed and the rules that are placed on it to actually get to the 100 units that would be by right zoned, but it's probably high more li, more likely. I think that the arguments around wanting to have denser housing near the center of town is great, but I think that we should do that in a more thoughtful way and not constrained by the rules of the MBTA law. But, in contrast, Woodward Village, as was said by one of the previous speakers here, the owners have the right to say whether or not they sell, and based since it's a new development, I think, and is it with the sustainability and everything, it's unlikely that they would sell, and as long as you can get that neighborhood, that community that was talked about multiple times by residents of it, together to say no to a developer, then it doesn't have to be done. And if it was done, it would have more limited impact. So, I think that it's not really saying, you know, we don't care about what was done for Woodward Village, I think it's saying, we're trusting Woodward Village to make the right choice and to only do something that makes sustainable sense for the town and not to be bullied by developers into doing something more. I think that the Archdiocese of Boston is less likely to do that, and we can make better choices in the future to have thoughtful zoning near the center of town if we want to actually build housing and affordable housing and more vibrant community center.
Thank you. At microphone two, please.
Hi, I'm Sue Sung, I'm at 19 Kay's Walk. What concerns me about the debate that I'm hearing today is that a vote for Woodward Village is a vote against development, and I think that is a huge assumption to be making. What I heard from the town council earlier was, don't worry about the law, trust us, we're in compliance, but that law can change. We don't know what the next administration's going to be like, in the same way this town's being forced to comply with the MBTA law, Kay's Walk could be forced to comply with the MBTA law. So, regardless of what we wanted as its residents, I think it's that unknown and uncertainty that leaves us exposed. So, I think we need to be careful that we're not voting for Woodward Village because we think that will preclude any sort of development. Keep in mind, it will cost them more money to buy Kay's Walk. As a result of that, any developer is going to expect more for their money. It can, I think the stat earlier is 147 units, that's 50% more than what the Archdiocese could, could do. So, if they do, developer does manage to get, we are giving them access to a much larger parcel to develop a lot more units that are only going to exacerbate all the issues that have been raised here so far. So, whoever said the slow development, I would say it's controlled development versus uncontrolled development. It is going to happen potentially, and, you know, by voting for Woodward Village, I don't think you're precluding it from happening, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning board wish to respond, the planning board would like town council to comment on something, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to be clear about my comments on Woodward Village. There's two components there. There's unit owners who own their units and whatever land they're granted through the condominium association or homeowners association. There is also common land, and that's controlled by the trustees. The homeowners and only the homeowners are the decision makers on whether or not their land gets developed. So, if they don't agree to sell, then it's not sold and there is not a development. The open space is controlled by the trustees. The trustees decide, based upon the bylaws, whether or not they can sell. I am not familiar with their bylaws, they can change their bylaws, but I suspect there is no authority to sell their open space without a unanimous vote of the condominium association. That's a fundamental change. Furthermore, that project was built by special permit, so it would require an amendment to that special permit to change any of those configurations.
Thank you. We have someone at microphone four, looks like three is empty, okay.
Amelia Fornier, 745 East Street. I just wanted to hit that, I know most of us here don't want to see all units built out, and with what we saw with Kay's Walk, with the conservation land, even though we didn't get a firm answer, with the conservation and going all around Kay's Walk, it seems like that we're not going to be able to use other land as nitrogen credits or to use that other land for wellhead protection. So, by using Kay's Walk, it seems like our best bet in terms of limiting this development.
Thank you. And then, back to microphone two.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Benz Goder, 305 East Street. I'm here to be against adopting St. Irene's, and the reason, one of the reasons is that we're not alone in this MBTA communities project, and I know Westford has really built out, I mean, the traffic that goes past our house towards Westford through the Rotary, it's insane, it's so much traffic, it backs up practically on 225. You add the housing that you're, you know, they're talking about adding at St. Irene's, close to the center that will have to go through the Rotary, I just think that's a really bad location for more traffic, because I don't know how many units they're building over in Westford, but there's going to be even more people driving towards Westford. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you very much. I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, and that includes the planning board, doesn't want to say anything in conclusion, okay? So, I think we are actually ready to vote. Now, could we just pull up the slide that, that shows 1A and 2B? And so while they're doing that, I'll just address the group at Benfield. Nancy, just take a show of hands, how many people want to prefer St. Irene's, how many people prefer Woodward Village? For those of you with your, your clickers, okay, no, we didn't, no, that's not what we wanted to see on the screen there, not the zoom. Okay? So, yes, here, this is what we want to see. So, with your clickers, got them? Okay, if your preference is for St. Irene's, you'll hit the green button. If your preference is for Woodward Village, you'll hit the red button, the 2B. Those of you in the cafeteria who have the five-button clicker, you need not push the send button, just push either the red button or the green button, whatever your choice is. And with that, we can now open the voting, please. And remember, when you get the okay on your keypad, that means your vote has been registered. And, looks like we're, anyone need any more time? Was that a yes? Did, okay? Did anyone have a problem with their clicker, they didn't get an okay or something? Want to make sure everyone's vote is in. Okay, I think we are ready to close the vote, so I'll ask, oh, no, I'm sorry, no, okay. All right. Make sure you, and if you weren't sure, you can vote again, but you'll get your okay. I think we have about the right number registered. Yeah, yeah, in the cafeteria, is that, everything is okay there? Okay? All right, so it looks like we're all set, let's close the vote. All right, thank you for your patience. The vote is 114 for St. Irene's and 347 for Woodward Village. So, with that, I declare that, under motion one, the town has selected option 2B, and so what that means is that, on the text, we're going to move to motion two, which is to adopt the, it's going to be a yes or no vote on the full text of the bylaw. So, just to be clear for everyone, most of the text here didn't matter whether it was St. Irene's or Woodward Village, okay? But you do have a little bit in the, what you see back at, make sure I get the right place, starting on page 13 of your motion handout, you'll see that on motion at page 13, it gives, that's if St. Irene's had been adopted, so we're not going to use that language. Instead, we will use the language at page 14 for Woodward Village. So, that's the bottom of 14, on to page 15, and then the zoning map that we'll use would not be the one on page 16, but instead the one on page 17. I'm not sure how much those details really matter to all of you, but I felt compelled to make sure everyone is clear on that. I'm sorry, did I misstate that? I hope I didn't misstate that. Okay, all right. So, what we are now do, so, motion two has been made by Sarah Smith on behalf of the planning board. We've already had the presentations on that, so now the floor is open for debate. And it is a simple question that we are debating, if anyone wishes to debate. Either say yes, you think the town should vote to adopt the zoning bylaw as we have now defined it, or if you think that the town, wish to convince your fellow town meeting members that we should turn down this whole thing, you can argue for that. So, would anyone like to speak to this question before we go to a vote? You ready to vote? No, you're not, I heard some no's, okay. If someone would like to speak to this, you got two minutes, get thee to the microphone now.
One moment.
Okay. We have someone in the cafeteria?
I've got it, I've got it. I'll go further away, so I'm not taking, burning out your ears. Anyway, my name is Ken Wright, and I'm at 81 East Street, and I just retired, exact, almost exactly a year ago. For 40 years, I was a litigator, I was a part-owner of a litigation firm that was in Lincoln, and so I have tried multiple cases, taken multiple cases up through appeal, et cetera, et cetera, just to give you an idea. So, if you vote not to approve this, and the state sues, you're talking a potentially infinite amount of attorney's fees that's going to be spent here, that we're all going to have to jointly pay for. So, that would be a ridiculous decision to make. And so, in addition to losing the grant funding, so, please consider that, if you're thinking this is the way out, that we're not going to approve this, because the state is going to come after us, as they did with Milton, okay?
Thank you. At microphone five.
My name is Steve Tobin, I live at 164 Partridge Lane. My wife Nancy and I have lived in Carlyle for 42 years. We raised our family here and are growing old here. We love being part of the Carlyle community. I'm deeply troubled by the debate on MBTA community zoning. It seems focused on the fear of state retaliation. No one seems to be talking about what effect this zoning might have on the Carlyle residents who live in Woodward Village. In one case, which we hope won't happen, a developer buys the property and they're forced to move out of the homes and community they love. Even if this doesn't happen, they will always live under the cloud of MBTA zoning. I worry about how they would be able to sell their homes. Think back to when you decided to buy a home in Carlyle. If you had a choice between two properties, one of which was under MBTA zoning you didn't understand and might cause you to lose your home someday, and one which wasn't, which would you pick? I know three of the families who live in Woodward Village. One couple are longtime Carlyle Center residents who downsized to Woodward Village. She has been active in a wide range of the volunteer organizations in town, including as president of the Carlyle Conservation Foundation, where I got to know her. Another couple were longtime residents of Acton before downsizing to Woodward Village. He immediately volunteered to be on the Carlyle Trails Committee as an associate member, earned his Carlyle trucker award, and has been actively involved in caring for the town's trails. Another couple downsized to Woodward Village after living in Lexington for many years. Similarly, they earned their trucker awards, she became an active associate member of the Trails Committee, and they both volunteer large amounts of time maintaining the trails we all enjoy. The point is, these are not numbers, these are people who love being part of the Carlyle community as much as I do. I cannot, in good conscience, screw my friends and neighbors to, as some are putting it, get the state off our back. I will be voting no.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? No one in the cafeteria? We have one, one more approaching, microphone one, and unless anyone else is at a microphone, and actually, can we move down from microphone three? I just can't see people there. We're going to take microphone three out of, out of action here. So, please move to the microphones if you want to speak, otherwise, we're going to begin to vote very quickly, so we've got three people up. Number one, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Roger Anzeli, I live in Garrison Way. I'm a recent arrival, relatively recent arrival in, in Carlyle, I've been here about two years, and after I got settled in, I started getting interested in what kind of issues are facing the town, and everywhere I looked, MBTA law popped up, and so I tried to look into it and understand that better, and it took a while to really get the hang of it, but once I understood it, I was pretty upset. It seemed to me like a, like a significant overreach by the state legislature into local communities' activities with a law that, when you looked at the details of it, seemed to have a pretty flimsy rationale for why Carlyle was even included under the requirements of the law. So, my initial reaction, gut reaction was, I'm definitely going to vote no, this thing, this is terrible. And then I've heard all the explanations why it's going to be very costly, but even then, I think I was more with my heart than my head, I was thinking, I'm still voting no. But after hearing the discussions around what's likely to happen and the number of things that can be done in the future, in terms of managing the whole process, if we were to vote yes on Woodward Village, I think my, gotten to the point where I'm voting with my head instead of my heart. I mean, it's still, to me, very upsetting, the, what's, what's going on, but I don't think, and particularly with the state using Buller Boy Tech with the state using bully tactics to say, well, okay, if you don't go my way, this is what we're going to do to you. But still, given the costs and benefits and the options for the future, I decided I would not vote no, and I vote with my head instead of my spleen.
Thank you. And I'll allow myself an editorial comment. People want to know, why do we allow debate at town meetings and why do we spend time talking with each other? It's to give ourselves the opportunity to change each other's minds. So thank you at least for providing an illustration of why we actually invest all this time here. At microphone two, please.
Hi, I'm Cosmo Catalano. I live at 51 Litchfield Drive. And I've heard a lot of mentions of the reasons people moved to Carlisle in this discussion. And I think a lot of people have lived here and loved it for a very long time. And I think it might be worth it to look at what it costs to come to Carlisle now and how much those costs would have interfered with the experience you all had raising kids here. You know, it's, getting sued by the state is expensive, losing grant money is expensive, buying a house here is expensive. Because, because of these things, it's, I've lost my train of thought, I apologize. I think it's, I think it's very short-sighted to take rationale from 40 years ago and try to apply it to today. People who are my age, who have kids in the school system, who use the trails, who run them every single day, bike on them, enjoy the town and love living here, I don't think it makes sense to cut off our collective nose despite our face here. Like, those years of experience you all had are things we're looking forward to, and to saddle us with a state lawsuit because you feel like the state is doing wrong, seems very short-sighted. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Fearrence. I'm at 125 Meadowbrook. I just want to clarify one, I guess it's really a question, more than a comment, but the question I think to Ken Wayne is to you. I think we're deciding, do we like the Kay's Walk option, or do we want to say no to the Kay's Walk option? We're not deciding if we comply or not forever with the MBAT, MBTA law. It's simply that question, right now, do you go with that or not? Is that correct or no?
That is, that is a good question, and let me answer it. You are voting yes or no on the specific proposal in front of you. The specific proposal in front of you is to, is a zoning proposal that the Planning Board, on the advice of Town Council, believes would bring the town in compliance with the MBTA mandate, and it would specifically do so by creating an overlay district at Woodward Village. The question is, do you want that yes or no? If you vote no, you can vote no for whatever reason you want and for whatever reason you believe might happen. If you choose, if you want to vote no because you think you are sending a message to the Planning Board or the rest of the town, I don't like Kay's, I like the idea of complying, but I don't want Kay's Walk, so go back and do more work. If you think that's the message and that's why you want to vote no, you vote no. If you want to vote no because you just think it's a bad mandate and you want to tell, and you don't think Carlisle should comply, then you vote no. If you have 18 other reasons for voting no, you vote no. I can't tell you, no one can tell you what the implication of voting no is going to be. It is all going to be speculation. So it is up to each of you to decide yes or no as you see fit. That's all we can say. At microphone five.
Tony Mariano, 1134 North Road. Not speaking on behalf of Board of Health, but just as someone who's been concerned with town water for years. I've heard a lot of concern, as it should be, everyone, about town water quality and water availability, as this zoning may impact that. And I just want to be clear that the state's regulations in Title V and in public water supply wells and Carlisle's supplemental regulations, Board of Health regulations, supplemental to Title V and their private water supply well regulations are designed to be very protective. So approving a higher-density development doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be a problem with water. The only, it'll have to go through a rigorous process to get approved and permitted to be protective of Carlisle's water resources. So that's the importance of those regulations that are already in place. The only threat could be that if a large septic system is used and it breaks. We get, you know, problems with functionality of these things from time to time, but still, in that sense, the burden would probably fall on the housing development itself because the Board of Health would be able to administer controls over, such as if a septic system fails, they require a tight tank, a situation where pumping would have to happen, so nothing gets discharged into the environment. So there are a lot of protections for town water, both quality and quantity. Quantity in the sense that a lot of testing would be required to see how it impacts the current aquifer that it's in. So, you know, rest assured that there are ways to address these developments that may or may not come in.
Okay, so we've got two more speakers at microphone five, and we'll recognize the two of you, and unless anything you say provokes the need for a response, we'll be moving to a vote thereafter.
Hello, I'm Devlin E. Paigebrook Road. I grew up in Carlisle. I'm just speaking on behalf of, for anyone you know here who has kids, I was the kid, right? And just the housing market right now, it's just kind of absurd, and, you know, I'm living with my dad still, you know, while attending university out in Amherst, but, you know, it's just kind of one of those things where, it's just one of those things where if you're considering talking about, think of the people, think of the people. At some point, if you have kids now, they're going to be, you know, in their early twenties, and they're going to be living a few if we can't build a new house.
Did you not hear the urgent fervent request that we not engage in fear mongering? Really? The final word.
I can't top that. Mark Levitan, 105 Wolf Rock Road. Obviously, going into this, we knew not everybody was going to be happy, but I think we just need to step back one quick second and say, where did this law come from? And that is because of a severe housing shortage in the greater Boston area. And, you know, we are, have our own constraints that are going to limit what could possibly be built, but I think my last word is, it would be rich, to use a word, for one of the wealthiest towns of the state to say that we're not going to try to do something to alleviate the pressure on the housing crisis.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to vote. This is a majority vote, and as I've said several times before, it's an up or down vote, yes or no. Do you want this zoning amendment, zoning bylaw, as presented, applying to Kay's Walk, Woodward Village? We'll open the voting, and if anyone has any difficulty, please raise your hand and we'll get you a new clicker. When you vote, make sure you get that "okay." And let us now begin. Yes means you are voting for the bylaw. As shown on the screen. So yes, do not leave until we have the vote called. You never know what can happen. Does anyone need more time? Got one more back there? Voting is open in the cafeteria and at Benfield? Anyone else? Everyone's all okay? All right, then we'll do a countdown of five, four, three, two, one, and we'll close the voting. Okay. The vote is 370 in favor, 54 opposed. The motion passes by not only more than a majority, but I will note for the record, more than two-thirds. Motion carries. And with that, I will entertain a motion to dissolve this special town meeting.
So moved.
So moved, and a second. And you may vote with your feet. Oh, and everyone, please return your keypads on your way out, and don't forget to vote on the override November 13th.
Hey, Brian.
Okay. So now, I'm going to save the...
There she is.